Okay, thank you, Joey. We're going to call the work session of the Board of Mayor and Alderman to order on August the 12th, 2025. Let's call the roll. Alderman Barnhill.
Here.
Alderman Blanton.
Here.
Alderman Caesar.
Here.
Alderman Peterson.
Here.
Alderman Berger.
Present.
Alderman Brown.
Present.
Vice Mayor Potts.
Present.
Alderman Baggett.
Present.
And the mayor's present. Next is citizen comments. Items not on the agenda, don't have any, so we'll continue to move forward. We'll, on the presentation of Williamson County CCTV STEM Emerging Careers Camp, they all have sports tonight, so none of them show up. So we're not going to have a presentation, but we'll look forward to possibly in the future. So then we'll go to the Centennial Homecoming, the Franklin High School Homecoming, the Turkey Trot by Grace Works. Any comments on any of those? Everybody good?
Well, Homecoming great, it's about COVID-4.
So, thank you, Mo.
Sure, I've got the next one, too, so.
Oh, good. The next is Resolution 2025-48, Resolution to approve a mural at 1175 Meridian.
Monique? Bull Investments, so want to put up a couple of murals on their facilities or their buildings at 1175 Meridian. One is Cajun Steamer and one is Eastern Peak Restaurant, and both of these have been before Public Arts Commission, and they recommend approval.
Question? Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. So when I looked at these, and I pulled up the attachment, and what I'm seeing, I'm guessing, is a computer rendering for Eastern Peak, and where it's just painting above a certain brick line, and then above their name as well. It's just painting it blue.
There were some blossoms that maybe didn't come through on the image, but there should be like some cherry blossoms on there, and then the Florida lease is on the Cajun Steamer. They're just more like stencils.
So the images that are on Slide 6, and then, or Page 6, Page 7 is the existing painting, and then what's on Slide 4 is the stencil work that's going to be added?
Correct.
It looks like this. Is that, so my question is this, when I looked at this, and again, hats off to everything that the Arts Commission does, but this appears just to be an exterior painting for a building less than an art piece.
It wouldn't fit in with our sign regulations, so if they wanted to make this change, they had to go through the Public Arts Commission. And they do discuss that sometimes, you know, regarding, you know, how elaborate the artwork is, and so they did decide to recommend approval on this one.
And is there any maintenance that is then required since this has to go through the Art Commission over time if this paint fades, chips, et cetera?
Yeah, the property owners are responsible for that.
Okay. Anybody else? Alderman Baggett?
Yeah, I saw this, and I thought, normally the art we get is like a piece of art that is on the building, and this felt different to me as well, that this, and I just don't know how we, I guess you just said it, this doesn't fall under the sign ordinance, or it's not allowable under the sign ordinance.
Correct.
So then it goes to...
The Public Arts Commission.
So I would say, I don't want to see all of our buildings being painted like this, and so, you know, I feel like this is kind of, this is the first one that I know of since having probably the Public Arts Commission that we've had like this. I do have some concerns, not, I mean, it looks wonderful, but kind of where we draw the line between art and signage and what we want our buildings to look like.
And that is a discussion that they have frequently as well.
Thank you. Alderman Caesar.
Just to extend on what Alderman Baggett was saying, this is not the first building like this. There's another one that I think is actually quite good to eat at that came up, but I don't think it came before this board, is Flower Child, and...
It did.
It did?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, so it was the same thing that it didn't fit?
Same type of thing, right.
Whole Foods parking lot, next to Muya, and...
Are you finished?
That's it?
Yeah, because you left us hanging there.
Well, what's next? Anybody else?
I didn't want to spoil that, because this is...
This is my concern, is that, and again, everything can be interpreted as far as art goes, but we're really talking about the exterior of a building and how this business is trying to be presented. So I would actually ask us to revisit this with, and Eric, don't know which team or department we would need to review this with, but I agree with what Alderman Baggett was just saying. We have more earth tone look on most of our buildings. We have some white ones that are out there as well, but I can only remember very few as Alderman Caesar said, maybe, and I didn't even remember that one. And I do have a little bit of concern with painting the exterior of our buildings versus the look and feel that we currently have.
So is the interest of the board to look at something that differentiates, something that might be closer to signage than an artistic mural? Is that what we're saying?
Yes, because I would not...
Because this kind of fell into that mural because they're painting the side of a building.
Right.
Which fits the general definition of a mural, but it's that front-facing and it integrates with kind of the signage and identity of the business as well. So is that what you're looking for, some differentiation?
I would, because I would not consider this a mural. I would consider this simply part of the exterior of a building.
Right.
Or, excuse me, exterior of the entrance for this business.
Okay.
And I don't think that this needs to be within the Art Commission.
Okay. Are you generally, in this case, in these two instances, because we need to act on what's come through the existing, are you generally interested in, you're okay with this, but you want to differentiate it, or do you want to hold this till you can look at some other, is there reservations about what's before you?
Yes, I do have reservations on that. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I don't think that this should be part of the Art Commission, that it should actually find underneath our sign ordinance or whatever classification this needs to be. And I would make a motion, if we were voting on this later, to go ahead and defer that until staff can come back and provide us some additional guidance.
We're not asking you to vote on it tonight. I'm asking so that we can provide this dialogue before we ask you to vote, and that's what I'm sensing, at least some of you are interested in, so we'll work to accommodate that.
Alderman Berger, if I might, I'm going to call on Alderman Blanton, because she is on the Public Arts Commission, so go ahead.
Yeah, and unfortunately, I was not at this meeting, so this was new to me and the pack of it as well. Jason, I would probably debate you a little bit, because when you think about signage, signage has a message typically in words. It's directional, it's branding. I do think there is some concern that this becomes kind of like the way of new development. It's like the trend, if you will. I think it's very tasteful in this, but it's interesting that you've got two that are side, almost side by side, so it starts making you get a little bit concerned. I do also think it's a little bit of a loose interpretation of a mural because it is not a standalone piece of art.
Right.
It is above and beside a facade, so it kind of like creates its own little niche of, well, I'm not a sign, I'm not a mural, but where do I go to get what I want? So I do understand that, but I don't know people better than me would understand what the trends are in building design to try to differentiate yourself. I think we do have to be careful, but I can only imagine that the Public Arts Commission lamented after this and had a very hefty discussion to try to figure out, because they do have that perspective of looking at things differently than we do. So that really, that was an opinion. It doesn't give me a stance or a stake in the ground, but I do feel like, since I do serve on that commission, I need to have some kind of comment.
And I totally respect that opinion, Alderman. It's, as I look at it on Slide 5, how the flowers kind of capture the title of the business, so, and it gets their theme, and then the Cajun piece has the Florida...
Lease.
The Florida lease, thank you. The Florida lease, and again, it's restaurant theme-driven, so just looking for more guidance, because I'm sure if we have this, and we may have more in the future.
But I would wonder, if this same art was on the side of the building, if they had the luxury to be an end building, would it be acceptable that way? So we have to think about all those different presentations, because then it would be more muralesque. They could just be positioning where they are in the block of, you know, side-by-side retail outlets. They didn't have that option.
Yeah, well, take them.
And they have been looking at their guidelines and regulations, so certainly we can put some stronger language in there about signage.
And maybe differentiating facades versus a side of a building which lends itself to a larger, more of a piece of art type of work. So what I would suggest we do is go back to public art for some additional dialogue, but also engage staff, appropriate staff, in that discussion with them, and maybe bring you back some additional thoughts on it, and maybe some options within that that might help differentiate or guide this further, so.
We can do that.
Alderman Berger.
Because we have other things to do. But if you look at Flower Child, I've had a lot of great comments about that, how beautiful that looks. The colors are very soothing, they're inviting and everything, and it works really well for that building. Trends come and go. I'm a little concerned with trends, so trends are not always that great, but signs, messages, murals are signs and messages. Signs, signage or ordinances are signs, those are messages. Murals usually tell stories or put something out there like that. I don't want to get too bogged down in stymie creativity, but also I don't want Pepto Bismol pink and black on a building, you know, somewhere that looks like, what is that? And people go, whoa. I can tell you one or two buildings right now we have problems with, and they shouldn't have been painted that way, because everybody in their, I don't, I can't tell you how many people talked to me about that, and I said I have no control over that. So anyway, there's a couple of things. I don't want to regulate too much, and I don't want to stymie creativity, but we also have to have some kind of guidelines. And I think the Art Commission is a great place to have that, but I agree with Jason, it's part of the facade, it's part of the building, it's part of, you know, it's not really a mural, so I don't know where that fits. So maybe we tweak the sign ordinance to let those things happen in the sign ordinance, or we go back and talk with the commission and say, what do you all think? Maybe they have some ideas as well. I think they ought to weigh in on it.
Okay.
Yeah, so, thanks.
Item 6, I'm sorry, Alderman Peterson.
Were these two businesses asking for this, or how did this, how did they get...
Bull Investment, they're the owner of the properties, and they're asking for it, not the specific businesses. But I'm assuming the businesses have asked Bull for it.
Okay, thank you, Monique. Item 6 is ordinance 2025-28, An Order To Amend The Budget Of City Franklin For FY 2025-26, Established In Public Hearing, Michael Walters Young.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. My name is Michael Walters Young, your Chief Budget and Performance Officer. This is a little out of the ordinary for our process. Normally, a budget amendment would start at Budget and Finance on Thursday. However, this was the only item that would have been on that committee meeting, so if the members of the CIC will indulge the members of the Budget and Finance Committee, they don't have to go to Eastern Flank at 3:00 PM on Thursday. We are asking, this is first reading on tonight, there's a full presentation that I will give to you at second reading on next meeting on August 26th, in order to expedite this item and save time on a very packed agenda. I do want to cover the summary, though, the four major categories that this first budget amendment of the year covers. The first, very standard, is the distribution of annual wage increases from our general budgets in the General Fund, Sanitation, Stormwater, and the Water Management Fund. It's simply a movement of the monies, so therefore, when we build the next year's budget, we are going from an apples to apples, and everyone's merit and coal adjustments are properly accounted for. The second are what affectionately we would refer to as carryover or reappropriation items, which we don't do either, but this is the mechanism for any pieces of equipment that were budgeted last year, or purchases of software, or materials that were not received prior to June 30th, but have been since July 1 or will be later on. So the money that was budgeted fell to fund balance, and we are simply re-appropriating it in the current measurement period in order to acquire what you had already authorized acquired in a previous fiscal year. The third is to ensure that the budget remains balanced with the property tax rate that was set on third and final reading on the second meeting of June. If you recall, the budget was built in the city administrator's recommendation of 32 cents, and that included a higher capital, higher property tax rate assumption for revenue, and a higher transfer to the Capital Projects Fund. Third and final reading, the vote was for a lower rate of 29.6 cents. This corrects both of those, lowers the property tax assumption, and lowers the transfer to capital projects by an equal $2.6 million. And finally, is to account for the capital purchase of the home at Creekside, $2,025,000, which you've already approved at a prior meeting this fiscal year. We're making sure to appropriate those funds. There are 10 different funds, there's various changes, but I'm happy to save the rest of the detail for your next meeting. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mike Walters Young. Any questions, comments? Item number...
Mayor, I do have one question, and help me understand, because this is maybe the first time that I've gone through an adjustment, but there were some variables that shifted. Not only do we adjust the amount for the property tax based on what Mr. Stuki's original budget was, we also potentially forfeited the hotel motel tax increase. How does the budget account for that, and does it only adjust down the capital and not adjust down the operating budget?
So, yes, the only item which is being adjusted is for capital. The only thing that was in question regarding the lower property, the choice that was presented between the higher rate and the lower rate, was simply the amount of money that we would set aside for partnership projects in capital. No operating budgets were affected on the property tax question. On the hotel motel rate question, because that is still outstanding, we are not recommending an adjustment to the budget at this time. So the assumption is still a 5% rate and collection of revenues. It's less, shall we say, impactful or important because you did not appropriate an expense in the hotel motel fund for that higher revenue. So we have a anticipated revenue of roughly $7.5 million, but expenses that are under three. So if that revenue is not recognized, there is no expense that we have to pull back or cancel.
And that item is still under consideration. We'll ask you tonight to defer that action another month, so we're still waiting to get some more information from the state on that to confirm where we go. We had not anticipated that going in place until January 1 as well, so you don't have nearly, you don't have a timing issue at this point, and as Michael said, it doesn't get you out of whack from an appropriation standpoint.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Eric, just a follow-up on that, and I'm sorry, as I was reading this information that Michael had, what's the timeframe on getting that information from the state?
We're waiting.
Just, we don't have like a...
We don't know for sure.
Q2, Q3, Q4, we're just waiting.
We have had dialogue with the comptroller's office, there's discussion of obtaining an attorney general's opinion. We're still working to get that information, so what we're going to ask you to do tonight is defer it to one of the September meetings, and then we'll, hopefully, we'll have something by then. That would be our goal, so we'll continue to work on that. We may take an additional path to try to get that clarification. So we don't have a specific answer, we'll work to get one.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mayor.
Alderman Baggett. Follow-up on that. So what, is there a process that they have to approve for us to begin initiating, collecting it? Because I thought by state law, there's, I mean, it's been granted, or they're just saying, press pause?
There is a difference of opinion about what is allowed in the law. When this was approved, and I think 2021, we thought there was a very clear carve-out for us, of any of us that were, had authority within a certain section of the state law. We still think that's the case, but the comptroller's office has a different view. They thought the intent was to cap everybody at a total collective hotel motel tax of 8%, so cities and counties combined. But we see a carve-out in the law that is where our authority was anchored. So that's the difference. It's a matter of that interpretation, and we'll just get that clarified and bring that information to you, and then there may be a decision to make.
But I guess I'm, but they collect it, or they collect, so I guess I'm thinking like mechanically, like how do we, do we just tell the...
We implement it, and then it's collected.
By?
Well, we manage it locally.
We collect it from the hoteliers.
We work with the county, and it gets collected, yeah.
From the, okay. So it doesn't necessarily go through them?
It's just, they check that authority, and they have a view of what was the intent and what was the action in 2021. We remember that distinctly and did not oppose it because we saw ourselves carved out. So that's where we are. Okay, thank you.
Alderman Barnhill.
Just one question. You said 8 cents count, county and city.
8%, yeah.
So the county's at four, and we're at four now?
Yes. And we know the county doesn't have anywhere to go the way that law was written. We believe we may, because of the section that was sort of carved out when it was originally passed in 2021. So we're going to get that answered, and then we'll bring that information to you and go from there.
Okay, we're going to go to Items 7 and 8 now, which is the ordinance 2025-22 and 2025-53, rezoning of 27.19 acres, PD District for Oriam, and then the other is revised development plan for Oriam with four modifications of standards. Chelsea.
Hi.
Item 7 and 8, please.
Yes, sir. I'll quickly go over the rezoning. It is a request to rezone 27.19 acres from planned PD 21.850,700 Hotel Keys District to planned PD 33.1 245,460 and 300 Hotel Key District. It's for a property located south of McEwen Drive and west of Carruthers Parkway to accommodate a proposed development plan. This development plan has been submitted concurrently. Envision Franklin places this property in the Regional Commerce Design Concept. This design concept states that these areas should contain high-intensity activity centers and attract large numbers of people and employers from both within and outside the city. These areas include major employment and revenue generators that are valuable community resources. In addition, new development should have integrated designs with coordinated access, amenities, and cohesive architecture that fits the context of the corridor. The proposed mixed uses, as outlined in the associated Oriam-PUD development plan, meet the intent of Regional Commerce Design Concept by providing activated streetscapes and comprehensive site planning. Staff, along with the Planning Commission, by a vote of 8 to 0, recommend that the Board of Mayor and Aldermen approve ordinance 2025-22. The development plan associated is proposing 900 multifamily dwelling units, 245,460 square feet of non-residential space, and 300 hotel rooms for a site, as I said, composed of 27.19 acres. The proposed development plan is vested and has been reviewed under the July 2018 zoning ordinance. And as I detailed in the associated rezoning, the proposed use, the proposed mix of uses outlined in the development plan meet the intent and guiding principles of the Regional Commerce Design Concept. A parking study was submitted that analyzes the parking needs throughout the development and compares... and comparison to the requirements of the vested zoning ordinance. The applicant has incorporated shared parking that will be utilized, and the shared parking study meets the requirements of Chapter 5.911-2, which outlines that an alternative parking plan can be utilized when the justification includes information on the size and type of the proposed development, the composition of tenants, the anticipated rate of parking turnover, and the anticipated peak parking and traffic loads for all uses that'll be shared, sharing off-street parking spaces. Staff does support the shared parking, the proposed shared parking analysis based on national parking publications. The shared parking utilization will support parking efficiency over convenience, but does not provide for a small surplus during the allocated, but does provide for a small surplus during the allocated peak utilization timeframe. The residential units' uses are part of the proposed share factor and do not have assigned dedicated spaces. The traffic impact analysis has been submitted and reviewed, and staff agrees with all the proposed improvements. The Parkland Agreement will be executed and will coincide with the development plan when the development plan is considered by the BOMA. Modifications of standard, I have provided you a reference sheet for, I also put this in your packet, just to reference. I'll try to be quick going through these, but I want to be able to provide you all the information. There are four modifications of standards requested with this plan. The plan also had an existing modification of standard that was previously approved by the BOMA on July, on June 11, 2019, with the original Oriam PUD subdivision development plan. MOS number 1 is requesting a modification of standard to allow pitched or gabled roofs in addition to flat or low-pitched roofs for non-residential and mixed-use structures. Pitched roofs are requested in the Village Center Zone as designated within the development plan and the MOS exhibit attached to the staff report. Chapter 5.3.69(c) states that flat or low-pitched roofs with parapet walls are encouraged within traditional areas, however, sloped roofs are permitted as necessary as a transitional feature as allowed in subsection 5.3.4. Transitional features. The zoning ordinance has more recently been updated to allow for pitched and gabled roofs, so this request is now consistent with the intent of the zoning ordinance. Staff recommended, recommends approval of MOS 1, as did FMPC by an 8 to 0 vote. MOS number 2 is requesting a modification of standard to allow a maximum of three digital interactive wayfinding screen panels in the designated zones within the Village Center as shown on the development plan and the MOS exhibit attached to the staff report. The zoning ordinance states that the following signs are prohibited in zoning districts, that includes moving signs. In addition, it states that exposed neon and LED that are visible are prohibited for signs and shall not be incorporated into the design of a principal or accessory structure. Moving signs of any kind and LED and exposed neon are not allowed per the current zoning ordinance and have been prohibited since the last major update to the signage standards. We're not able to regulate the content of the signs, and moving digital signs opens up the possibility for scrolling ads or some other information not regulated, not related to business names, directory information, et cetera. The request to allow prohibited moving signs for digital interactive screen panels is not consistent with the purpose and intent of not only the vested zoning ordinance, but also the current zoning ordinance. Staff recommended disapproval of MOS number 2, while FMPC recommended approval by a 6 to 2 vote. MOS number 3, requesting a modification of standard to allow for neon lighting, LED lighting to be used as internal illumination when the sign has a three-dimensional depth within a channel, or when used to reinforce the design of the sign, or when used as backlighting to create a halo lighting effect. The zoning ordinance states, as I said with MOS number 2, that exposed neon and LED that are visible are prohibited for signs and shall not be incorporated into the design of a principal or accessory structure. The current zoning ordinance also prohibits these types of illumination, and the request to allow prohibited sign illumination is not consistent with the purpose and intent of not only the vested zoning ordinance, but also the current zoning ordinance. Staff recommends disapproval of MOS number 3, while FMPC recommended approval by a 6 to 2 vote. The last MOS that they are requesting is a modification to allow string lights as an appropriate lighting solution in pedestrian-oriented areas, dining areas, and amenities spaces within the development. String lights will be permitted in designated zones within the development plan and the MOS exhibit attached to my staff report. There shall be no string lights or other hanging obstructions within the public right-of-way or spanning across fire access lanes. The zoning ordinance specifically prohibited in all base districts the string light type in the 2018 zoning ordinance, and the zoning ordinance has more recently been updated to allow these types of string lights. The request to allow string lights is now consistent with the intent of the zoning ordinance, and staff, along with FMPC, recommended an approval of MOS number 4, and that was by a vote of 8 to 0. The last thing that I just wanted to bring to your attention for your reference is that the vested and approved development plan does utilize conventional design standards as opposed to traditional design standards. The zoning ordinance that this plan is vested in allowed for this property to use either traditional or conventional design standards, the characteristics of which I included down below, I will not read those, because you guys, you guys got that. But, with the revision, the applicant has adjusted the design standard being utilized to the traditional design standard. This change is notable only because it does reduce the parking requirement, as well as the open space requirement from a 5% to a 3%. So, I just wanted to make sure that you were aware that that was also happening with this development plan. Staff, along with FMPC, by a vote of 8 to 0, recommend that the Board of Mayor and Aldermen approve Resolution 2025-53 with conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Chelsea. Any questions for Chelsea? I do have two public commenters, Greg Gamble and Glenn McGee. I believe they're the applicants.
Sir?
I believe you're the applicants.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen. We appreciate you considering our new development plan. I've had a lot of conversations with many of you, our team has, over the last several years. We got this property zoned in 2019, we're on the starting blocks, and we all know what happened in 2020, and we have certainly been putting forth our efforts to bring something to the market that we feel would be viable and executable. We did start the construction out there with a plan, and we've made some decisions to change that plan, and we feel this for the better. And many of you have seen many of those plans, but we put together a great host of consultants. Greg and his team was a part of that, from local, from out of town, and we just said, scour the nation to see what works best. We're excited about it. Our marketing efforts are going great, the village concept is working from a branding standpoint of some individual buildings that the tenants like, and so, I want to thank staff, they've really done a good job of pushing us and encouraging us in certain ways, and we appreciate that. We're excited about what's happening in this corridor. As you know, we've done a lot of development out there, and we feel this is an executable plan, and we're ready to go. So, I'm going to let Greg explain the plan, if there's any questions, I'm available to answer those.
Thank you, Glenn, and thank you, Mayor, for this opportunity. I just want to highlight a few key elements about the development plan that we believe are pretty important. As mentioned, the Oriam Master Plan was first approved in 2019 under the 2018 zoning ordinance, so it is vested under that ordinance. Some things have changed and evolved through our ordinance adoption process over the years, and some of our modification of standards respond to some of those changes and nuances. But, 2019, that's 11 years after the approval of the McEwen Interchange that opened in 2008. Over the past 15 years, the City of Franklin has intentionally planned the Carruthers and McEwen Corridor, and it's been through state investment and city investment into infrastructure that has made this Regional Commerce District even possible. The policy for regional commerce states that this is for major economic generators, for revenue generators into the City of Franklin, and that they are valuable community resources, and that these places are to provide a mixture of housing in order to create vibrant live, work, play opportunities. Multifamily housing is the only housing type that is supported in the Regional Commerce Base District. Now, it can be done in a variety of ways, obviously. This Cor, Oriam is a part of a greater master plan, it's a part of a Cool Springs Master Plan, it's a part of the Carruthers Corridor Master Plan, it's contributing by constructing Oriam Drive through the property to a new intersection of McEwen. It's contributing by constructing Ovation Parkway from Carruthers Parkway West to Oriam Drive. So, there are onsite regional connectivity that's been planned for the past 15 years in this area. We are fortunate that the timing of this development and the timing of the development Ovation aligns with the construction of McEwen from Cool Springs Boulevard to Wilson Pike. These developments certainly could have come much earlier in the timeline than the construction of that roadway, so syncing and linking those constructions, that infrastructure improvement with these developments is pretty important. The approved development, as stated, has 480 homes entitled 700 hotel rooms, 100,000 square feet of retail and restaurant space, and 750,000 square feet of office. The new plan proposes 900 homes, 400 hotel rooms, so a reduction in the number of hotel rooms, 92,860 square feet of retail and restaurant space, so keeping that about the same, and reducing the office to 153,600 square feet. This reduction in intensity reduces the average daily trips by over 4,000 trips. That's a reduction in 110 trips in the AM peak hour and a reduction of 333 trips in the PM peak hour. They are committed to doing the same infrastructure improvements. Right now, I've got a board here of the roadway improvements, and I'll try and hold it as best I can over here on the side. What you're seeing here in red, those are Phase 1 improvements, those are being constructed as this property here, Phase 1, is under construction. They now have their plans approved, ready to start Phase 1. So, you're seeing additional turn lanes onto Oriam Drive, you're seeing additional turn lanes here onto Oriam, and an additional turn lane here onto Ovation. Phase 2, which is this middle block, we'll see the construction of the areas here in blue, so you have two right turn lanes now turning onto Carruthers Parkway, and you have two additional turn lanes that are turning into, I'm sorry, Oriam, onto Carruthers Parkway and then Ovation Parkway. So, because, even though they have reduced the intensity of the development, they're keeping the improvements the same, and they're committed to doing that. I've handed you out an 8.5 by 11 packet. The new Oriam Master Plan is designed around the principles of placemaking. This image on the front is the grand lawn, the Central Park, it's the gathering space, it's bordered on three sides by outdoor dining. If you can find this one, yeah, that has the image that looks like this on the front. You'll notice that they're flat-roofed buildings, two stories that have outdoor dining on the roof, so you can kind of look over into the space. This is meant to be playful, it's meant to be inviting to families, it's meant to be that grand lawn where kids feel free to run and play and have fun. Also a part of the outdoor experience on the next page is Oriam's contribution to the mountain bike park system. They've purchased a five-acre property and have included it as a part of their development plan with a commitment to include additional mountain bike trails that link from the John Henry Carruthers House on Huff Feinsridge all the way to Liberty Park. And, we've illustrated here the amount of mountain bike trails that the City of Franklin is going to see once it's fully completed. It's going to be fantastic. On the next page, we've provided some information for you, this is not new, it's provided in the development plan, but we thought it would be easier for you to have access to. These first three are changes that are already incorporated into the new zoning ordinance, and we're asking for modification of standards, because we're vested in 2018. The second two are modification of standards on signage that were supported by the Planning Commission. And then, on the very last page of this 8.5 by 11, we've provided a side-by-side that shows you the current approved plan, its entitlements, and the proposed master plan and its entitlements. Glenn and I are available to answer any questions that you may have, and look forward to your responses. Thank you.
Alderman Baggett, you're recognized.
I do have a question, is it all right there?
Yes, please.
The corner is green, is that corner going to be open space, is that part of the open space? What is that corner, is that another lot?
We had a request by the Planning Commission to provide more illustrative drawings as to what that might look like. It's not included in our packet, it's not included in the development plan, but at the Planning Commission, we provided this illustrative rendering, and I'll turn around so that the audience can see behind. But, this is a, it's a pool of water that's going to have a rock-lined edge, it will have some freeboard to capture some of our detention. This is the office building here, fronting onto McEwen. This is the parking structure that's behind it, and then this is the hotel that is on the right-in, right-out, right off of Carruthers Parkway. So, I see that's kind of this open space area here, this is right on the corner of McEwen and Carruthers.
It's a lot better than, better, but there was a hotel, wasn't there, a 12-story hotel, what was, a big hotel on the other plan?
The other plan, 12-story.
That looks nice.
Yeah, we think so.
Are you too, Alderman?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I do agree, I think that looks really nice, that rendering that you just showed. Could you just share a little bit, as you had pointed out, the parking structure and the facade or the exterior, so that those that are driving by, you know, as they're looking at that water, that waterscape area, what that's going to, how you're going to make it so it's not going to be a parking lot, or look like a parking garage?
It does have architectural treatments, just like office, just like the hotel, we want this to resonate together, it's important that they do. It's going to sit back off of Carruthers Parkway, behind the lake, we're going to have landscape and pedestrian sidewalks that are along Carruthers, so that's going to be this experience on the corner, but really, we want the focal points here to be the hotel building, the office building.
Yeah, I think my only comment to that is knowing that, how that structure is going to look out over that waterscape area is the headlights that could potentially, or that light that comes off of the cars, is to shield that as much as possible as it's facing the waterscape.
That architectural edge along that, so that, okay, that's great.
You finished?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Alderman Peterson shaking her head.
I'm questioning.
Alderman Blam.
On modification about the neon lighting, excuse me, as it reads, it talks about internal, and some of the pictures depicted here are, I know, I recognize, are inside buildings, but others look like they're on the facade. Can you kind of explain that, because I'm getting confused by the internal?
Okay, makes sense. The intent behind that is that, in the master plan, this is internal to the site, so this building's going to have retail, restaurant, personal services on the ground floor, these buildings are a mixture of one and two, two stories in height, so instead of having it out on Carruthers Parkway, we want it so that it's internal to the...
Okay, I just want to clarify that, because the pictures got me confused.
Sure.
Because I do know that at my place of work, there's been some, like, push and pull about people having neon sites within their building, facing out, and I thought, oh, if we're kind of going down a slope, that might be accepted, I think we need to revisit that, so.
Yeah, the exposed lighting, I mean, it'd be like Jenny's Ice Cream in, and they have the exposed lights.
Got it.
Anybody else ready to move on? Thank you, Mr. Gamble. We'll now go to items 9 and 10, which has to do with rezoning 103.93 acres, that's ordinance 2025-20, and we're speaking about Ovation, and we'll also be looking And we're speaking about Ovation, and we'll also be looking at a revised development plan for Ovation, which is resolution 2025-52, which has eight modifications of standards. Chelsea, you're the modification of standard expert.
Hi.
So far.
I'm the modification of standard queen. So this zoning, rezoning is from PD 12.23 with 480,000 square feet of nonresidential and 450 hotel keys to PD 15.05, 1.655 million nonresidential square footage and 350 hotel key district. This property is right across the street from the property that we were just discussing. It is also in the regional design, the regional commerce design concept, so I won't explain that again, if that's okay. It, the proposed mix of uses in this development plan and rezoning meet the intent of the regional commerce design concept by providing activated streetscapes and comprehensive site planning. Staff, along with the planning commission, by a vote of eight to zero, recommended that the Board of Mayor and Aldermen approve ordinance 2025-20. This development plan, Ovation PUD subdivision, proposes 1,525 multifamily dwelling units, 69 townhome dwelling units, roughly 1.6 million square feet of nonresidential space, and 350 hotel rooms for a site that's composed of 103.93 acres. As detailed in the associated rezoning, the proposed mixes do meet the guiding principles of the regional commerce design concept, and they also, they meet the intent laid out in that design concept. A shared parking study was provided. It analyzes the parking needs inside of the Ovation Parkway loop in comparison to the requirements of the zoning ordinance. The shared parking study meets the requirements of chapter 10.4.1, allowing the reduction of 2,339 spaces inside the loop of Ovation Parkway, promotes parking efficiency over parking convenience, and supports efforts to minimize impervious surfaces throughout the site. Any uses outside of the Ovation Parkway loop will individually meet the parking requirements within the zoning ordinance without the utilization of a shared parking plan. Traffic impact analysis has been submitted and reviewed, and staff agrees with all the proposed improvements, and the Parkland agreement will be executed and will coincide with the development plan when the development plan is considered by the BOMA at public hearing. The modifications of standard included, there are eight. Staff has provided that reference sheet for you to look at. This development plan is a little bit more complicated with our modifications of standards, so the first seven will be fairly straightforward. The eighth one, we may have to discuss a little bit more. So MOS number one is requesting a modification to allow the maximum block length of 3,600 linear feet for the block encompassing the wetland park and stormwater management area. Within our internal street network zoning ordinance, it states that block length perimeter can't exceed a maximum of 2,400 feet, except the DRT may approve a block length perimeter for up to 3,200 feet in cases where environmental or topographic constraints exist, where the street classification prevents a connection, where a proposal includes an internal parking structure. The proposed block length is 3,598 linear feet, which is nearly 400 linear feet more than what can be approved administratively. With that said, the block does encompass an existing wetland area, which includes two sections of protected stream and stream buffer area, as well as an existing stormwater management area. This block also includes two parking structures and a fire lane, which provides emergency and pedestrian access through the block. This request meets the standards laid out for staff with the zoning ordinance, but exceeds the amount allowable to be provided administratively. The request also does not threaten the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. Therefore, staff recommended, recommends approval of MOS number one, as did FMPC by a vote of eight to zero. MOS number two is requesting a modification to allow flat roofs with parapets for the townhouse, townhouse building type. Chapter 6.6 states that the roof elements pitch has to be three to 12, two 12 to 12, excluding small roof sections over porches, entryways, or similar areas. Staff can support this request based on the proposed urban mixed-use context and the precedent set by the approval of a similar MOS for the adjacent development Oriam. Staff recommends approval of MOS number two, as did FMPC by a vote of eight to zero. MOS number three, a request to allow up to 50% of retail storefronts on commercial mixed-use building type to have transom, to not have transom windows, and to allow up to 50% of retail storefronts on commercial slash mixed-use building types to not have knee walls. Chapter 6.9, Building Elements for Retail Storefronts, states that any storefront has to have, has to display windows, transom windows, knee walls of between 18 and 24 inches and other architectural elements such as bulkheads, trim, and cornice details. This request is not consistent with the intent of the zoning ordinance. Knee walls provide a base, which is required for facade composition by our zoning ordinance, and both knee walls and transoms define a more traditional classic design, which is prioritized in this building type. In addition, the request results in practical difficulties in enforcement and the tracking of the 50% allowance. Staff recommends disapproval of MOS number three, while FMPC recommended approval by a vote of eight to zero with the condition that the up to 50% language be removed. MOS number four, it's a request to allow up to three of the following primary materials on a facade: brick, natural stone, cultured stone, or precast concrete as a primary material on a facade for a large-scale office building type. Chapter 6.10 states that primary materials on the facade can include up to three of the following: brick, natural stone, or cultured stone. Staff requested more information addressing why precast is suitable and advised the applicant to provide some explanation as to how the addition of precast concrete would enhance the design of the development more than if the standards were strictly adhered to. And in staff's opinion, adequate explanation was not provided. Limited example photos were provided, with the majority of those examples being from other locations. There are no specifications related to the application of the proposed precast concrete material in terms of scoring or facade variation, as discussed at the joint conceptual workshop. This request is not consistent with the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. Staff recommends disapproval of MOS number four. FMPC recommended approval by a vote of seven to one. MOS number five, similarly, this is a request to allow up to three of the following: brick, natural stone, cultured stones, smooth wood siding, fiber cement siding, or precast concrete as a primary material on a facade for a commercial mixed-use building type. Chapter 6.9 states that primary materials on the facade can be up to two of the following: brick, natural stone, cultured stones, smooth wood siding, or fiber cement siding. Staff requested more information as to why precast would be, would be suitable and would enhance the design. Limited example photos were provided, with the majority of the examples being from other locations. That being said, there are no specifications to how to regulate the application of the proposed precast concrete, and this request is not consistent with the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. Staff recommends disapproval of MOS number five. FMPC recommended approval by a vote of seven to one. MOS number six, requesting a modification of standard to eliminate the requirement for planting at the base of a retaining wall behind building J, as shown on the development plan. Chapter 13.2.5A, Retaining Walls for Multifamily, Nonresidential, and Mixed Uses, state that each retaining wall shall have a single row of evergreen shrubs planted every five feet on center at the base of the wall to soften its appearance. Shrubs shall be a minimum of 30 inches in height at the time of planting, and evergreen trees or ground cover shall be permitted as an alternative, subject to approval of the Department of Planning and Sustainability. The existence of the established ripperium buffer meets the intent of screening the retaining walls. Therefore, the request does not threaten the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance, and staff recommends approval of MOS number six, as did FMPC by a vote of eight to zero. MOS number seven, requesting a modification of standard to increase the maximum retaining wall height to a maximum height of 22 feet for one wall located behind building J, and to increase the maximum retaining wall height to a maximum of 16 feet adjacent to Brook Meadow Lane. The locations are shown in the development plan. Chapter 13.2.5 states that the maximum height of retaining walls is 10 feet. The applicant is proposing to exceed the height allowance within chapter 13 in two places on the site. Both walls could be reduced if the density of the overall site was reduced. The applicant has not provided any exhibits that detail the height of these walls would enhance the design of the site. This request is contradictory to the purpose and intent of this section of the zoning ordinance. Staff recommends disapproval of MOS number seven. FMPC recommended approval by a vote of eight to zero with amended language to address only the 22-foot wall per the request of the applicant on the floor that evening. So the 16-foot wall is no longer part of the request. They were able to evaluate prior to the FMPC meeting the need of the 16-foot wall and on the floor requested that it be removed as part of that MOS. MOS number eight, requesting a modification of standard to place a parking structure parallel to the Carruthers Parkway and the McEwen Drive right-ofways, as shown in the development plan. Within chapter 10.52A, Parking Structures, it states that outside of the CFO and the CAO, where along an ulterior or collector's street, parking structures shall be screened by buildings at least as tall as the parking structures. The zoning ordinance clearly requires that where along an arterial or collector's street at or above grade, parking structures shall be screened by buildings at least as tall as the parking structure. The proposed MOS does not enhance the design of the development more than if the standards were strictly adhered to. The conditions upon which the request is based do not seem unique to the design intent for the development and seem to be applicable generally to other properties, and the modification is not consistent with Envision Franklin or the intent of the zoning ordinance. In addition, the adjacent development Oriam was able to locate their parking structures internal to the site and meet the requirements of the current zoning ordinance. Staff advises the same for this site. The request for the parking structure along the McEwen Drive right-ofway is about 390 feet from the right-ofway. Staff was clear on the importance of showing the view from McEwen Drive of the proposed parking structure. While a few graphics were provided to show the distance from McEwen Drive and the topographic nature of features between McEwen and the parking structure, there were no graphics or exhibits provided to ensure that the parking structure wouldn't be viewed from the right-ofway. The graphics provided seem to only shed light on how much of the structure will actually be seen from McEwen, and while there is a large amount of space between the parking structure and McEwen, there appears to be only a small portion of the structure that will be screened from view. These requests threaten the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance and are not consistent with the level of design expected within the city of Franklin. Staff recommends disapproval of MOS number eight unless the following conditions are achieved with the purpose of meeting a greater public benefit for the overall transportation system and a high priority regional transit corridor that could justify the placement of a parking structure along a major arterial street against the zoning ordinance requirements. Those I will read. I'm gonna jump to the next page that in y'all's, the second page of y'all's reference that has, basically, we outlined what planning commission could act, like what motions they could make. And I thought maybe it might be easiest for me to just go through that with you guys. So staff, staff's recommendation is number four. This is a disapproval with staff comments. This would mean that the location of the parking structures along the arterial streets are recommended to be disapproved unless the zoning ordinance requirements for parking structures to be screened by buildings at least as tall as the parking structures is met, or the plan provides the following: a regional and/or local transit ticket office with possible ancillary amenities is located on the first floor of the parking structure along Carruthers to activate the ground floor facing the street. B, a transit stop, perhaps with a designated pull-off area, is located on Carruthers Parkway adjacent to the parking structure, and pedestrian connections are provided directly from the parking structure to the transit stop. C, a specified amount of park-and-ride parking spaces, as determined by the city of Franklin and regional and local transit providers, are provided within the Carruthers Parkway parking structure. D, the shared parking study is updated at one stop to reflect the park-and-ride spaces as staff anticipates there to be minimal impact to the development's parking demand at the peak times. And E, elevated architectural detailing is provided on the facades of both parking structures to make the appearance of the parking structures mimic other buildings in the development. So that was staff's recommendation. FMPC recommended approval with conditions. That's number two. Number two, those conditions that were added, were added by the applicant on the floor the night of planning commission. So the applicant requested that this be what FMPC approved, which is, this would mean that the location of the parking structures are recommended to be approved as proposed, and that the elevations of the parking structures meet the following conditions: their architectural detailing to be similar size and rhythm as a primary structure. The building would include a basemental cap. A minimum of three different building facades will be applied along the parking structure facade facing the arterial road. Should the garage width change to less than 150 feet, then only two facades would be required. Pedestrian access entry facing the arterial road, and foundation landscape planting along the base of the parking structure. FMPC recommended approval by a vote of eight to zero with the following added conditions that I referenced in number two. The other two options are basically an approval, as they have submitted it without any conditions, the approval with the conditions that they added on the floor that FMPC recommended. Three, a flat disapproval of that MOS. Or four, the disapproval with staff comments and conditions, which was staff's recommendation. Staff, along with the FMPC, by a vote of eight to zero, recommend that the Board of Mayor and Aldermen approve resolution 2025-52 with conditions. Thank you.
Alden, Bird.
Before you sit down, Chelsea.
Oh, yes.
Yep. Can we go over, I'm just glancing over here to help me look at this, the difference between the number two and the number four? One, one of course is the transit. Transit, ticket office, transit stop. Anything else that I need to be looking at there?
One is approval, and there's nothing like we can hold them to outside of adding conditions. So two is an approval with these added conditions. Four is a disapproval, unless they do what, what we've listed as conditions.
But you're, what I'm asking here, all you're asking in, the difference between two and four is the transit.
Yes.
Is that alone?
I mean, yes, the, the conditions down below are a recommendation, are, are contingent on that transit.
Because you have A, B, and C all talk about transit.
Correct.
And then you've got shared parking.
Yes, ma'am.
One-stop park-and-ride. So your A, B, C, and D are all addressing transit.
Yes, ma'am.
And there's nothing in transit on number two, I've seen. How about number E? How about E in number four? Architectural detailing. When you say mimic other buildings in the development, that is not in number two, is it?
So number two is citing. So, number two is citing, maybe not exactly, but pretty close to what is already existing in the zoning ordinance for commercial mixed-use building types. So, they added this language to say, we'll essentially make these parking structures look like buildings, which is pretty much what E is saying. We just didn't go into the specifics because it will just reference that all the buildings have to meet the requirements of that building type.
So, your A under number two and your E sort of coincide with each other?
Yes.
Is it, from what I'm reading? Okay. I may have another question, but right.
Alderman Berger. Has the Transit Authority weighed in on the fact that this is before us?
Yes. My understanding is that... I'm so sorry. I will defer to Vernon for more specifics because he's been involved with these conversations more than I have.
Thank you, Chelsea. Very nice job. Alderman Baggett serves on Franklin Transit Authority, talked to John Schor about this. We, as some of you know, WIGO, we've been working with WIGO with the Rolling Hills Hospital and an adjacent property. Also, had some conversations regarding the big box bargain store that was recently vacated next to the Steak and Shape. And there is a relationship between a representative of WIGO and Alex Chambers from Highwoods regarding this site, which seems to be ideal if it can be a win-win for everybody. And that's, we're at such at this point with, because the Rolling Hills site isn't coming to fruition, that we wanted to get this in front of the Highwoods team, and they've been very good at engaging with WIGO and some of our staff to try to see if this is a viable option. For that reason, we have multiple conditions on this particular item that will provide guidance on how to proceed and try to keep the Highwoods Ovation Project moving forward.
So, no, they haven't weighed in, the Transit Authority? I mean, that's what I heard.
No, that's, no, not because we don't have a plan.
The Transit Authority has not weighed in on this, and I think that's the short answer. And I think all those things are good, what you just said. We're in the middle of a Transit Master Plan exercise that is really gonna be critical to transit in this area. And this is the first time I've heard of this transit being on the Transit Authority, being here, and I appreciate the outside-the-box thinking that went into this, I really do. But it comes back to the fact that the parking deck's on the street, and, you know, so what can we get for breaking one of our own rules? I mean, I think that's what we got here. I'm hesitant to do it. I didn't like the deck on the street to begin with. But now this whole parking, this transit thing, that now we're gonna approve something for a transit stop that we don't even know we need, we know we need it, we don't know that that's the place we needed, we need it, and the master plan's not done. I do applaud the creativity, but I feel like our staff does a great job of planning, but I don't know that this is, judges see both sides of the envelope here, and I think we've got, I don't know that this has been planned for a transit stop. We need a transit stop in Cool Springs. But how do we, you know, it feels like the cart before the horse, us approving this to be this, you know, and then what if the master plan comes back and says, that's actually not the best place for a transit stop. It needs to go somewhere else, and we've approved a parking deck on the road thinking, you know, we're gonna get a transit stop. I mean, I think it, and I appreciate the Highwoods for getting creative like this, but I just, at the end of the day, is like, should the deck be in front of, on the street? And I think I asked to get even more facade and wrap that building a little bit more, but, I don't know, this just seems like a little bit of smoke and mirrors on the, not from Highwoods or anybody else, but I just feel like we're, I was a bit confused where the transit kind of got dropped in. And now everyone, we're all in favor of transit, but then it just feels like a little bit of a distraction. But I just, I wanted to vocalize it from the Transit Authority. We have not weighed in on this. The Transit Authority has not considered this. Maybe Chairman Schor has, but he is not the Transit Authority, and I think there is, and I have to speak up for the other members of that authority.
Vice Mayor. All right, go ahead, Mr. Berger.
Yeah, and I can appreciate Alderman Baggett's current, I want to be explicitly clear here that staff is trying to be created to create a park-and-ride, which is much needed, but the board has a clear option. Deny the parking structure on Carruthers Avenue and have it comply with the city's ordinance, which means putting liner stores on the front of it or relocate it elsewhere on the property. We'll continue to work with WIGO to find a suitable place, and we'll engage the Franklin Transit Authority in this discussion. We were trying to bridge that conversation, and I apologized if we're trying to be too creative at this late time.
I mean, is there an interest in having us continue to pursue that or not? I mean, you have a window of time when development is taking shape. Do you want us to keep that dialogue alive, or we are where we are, what are your thoughts?
I agree, I think that, you know, now we're kind of, now we've been put in a pinch on the Board of Mayor and Alderman. Do you like transit? Do you want a WIGO stop? If you do, you gotta approve ovation with this thing on the McEwen. That's what it feels like. I mean, it's not what you put us, I mean, it's what it feels like, and I have been advocating for this Transit Master Plan to get, so we can get it right and get it in the right place. There's gonna have to be some transit stop in the middle or some WIGO, something in this area, for sure. At what expense, and is this the right thing? I would like to hear from the Transit Authority. There's a lot of great professionals on that.
Sure.
And then we got this whole third-party consultant that's doing the study as well. Ideally, would like to have had that before, but I know we can always do that.
We are where we are with it, and it's a legitimate concern. I guess I'm asking for clarity, if there's enough interest, we can still pull some of those levers and see what comes from it as this continues to move through the process. You have, not a lot of time, but you have a little bit of time, and there might be something we could try to add to this that might get you more comfortable.
I also might be a lone voice, so I'd love to hear from you.
Go ahead with TMA Group, and then I'm gonna recognize the Vice Mayor, then Alderman Berger.
Well, I sit on the TMA Group Board, and while I'm relatively new, I know that there is mixed impressions about what the TMA and Franklin Transit does for our community, and I think that as we're trying to figure out through the study, leaving that seat at the table out of the equation, it seems bizarre to me. So, pulling levers is a great way to say that, but if we don't have the organization that we help fund through help from other governmental partners have a voice in this when we're talking about transit, it's a slap in the face. So...
Well, that's what we're trying to address at this stage.
But I'm trying to tell, Patrick, I hear you. I agree with you. I also agree that the deck, and I'm not gonna get out of my lane because I just want to talk about TMA Group, I think we've gotta do the right thing, as we always try to do. And I don't know WIGO, but we need to pull a seat up to the table for the Transit Authority to try to figure this out as well. It is, it's part of our extension of who we support as an organization. Sorry, Ken. Thank you.
No problem. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Much of what Alderman Blanton just said is where I was going, that's all right. But Eric, to answer your question, I think that we do need to move it forward. I know that when I first looked at this, I asked about what the bus routing system would be, what changes needed to be done. I've got concern about, is it gonna access off of Highway 96? Is it gonna access up Carruthers? Is it gonna access off of McEwen down? You know, that we've got an opportunity here. I'm not opposed, and Vernon, I applaud everybody that's been involved in this. We do have to get creative. I just would like to see more of the plan put into place so that we have more details. I do think it is a little bit of a risk to make this approval, even though I think it probably is in the right place, and it probably is the right traffic location for everything. But we need more details.
Alderman Berger.
Well, this location certainly is not my favorite place to put a parking garage or parking structure, but if we do transit, it really needs to be there. You don't need to be dragging people through a development. It needs to be up front, so that's why it's really important for that to happen. That parking structure serves, I believe, building A, C, A, J, and F. So, that's why it's important to have that parking structure nearby. I'm very concerned, and I've talked with the Highwoods about this too, that how that facade looks and how it's broken up. So, when you're driving by there, it's not gonna look like a parking structure, it's gonna look like a building, and that's gonna be extremely important if it stays on the corner. The facade, how that serves those buildings, and how it serves transit, I definitely don't want it, if it's gonna serve transit at all, it can't be internal, it needs to be up front. So, those are the things I think we have to work on.
Alderman Blanton.
I was just going to clarify, but I can do that after your turn. I am so sorry. I just wanted to make sure that I was clear, because this was a lot of information, and I know there was so much stuff that I was just rattling off at you. If you chose to pursue, continuing to pursue those options, it would be a disapproval unless they did those things. So, our recommendation as staff is that you disapprove the parking garage unless they can find a way to meet all those requirements. So, it's a disapproval until they figure it out. So, that's the caveat, because like, we have said a couple of times, like, approval, it is not. We are not recommending that we approve it. Yeah, so we are recommending disapproving it unless they're able to find a way to meet A through E. And so, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. I know that it's confusing because there's four options, but...
I'm sorry. Are there others that want to speak?
I just wanted to answer Eric's question. I mean, I can't imagine not including the transit in this. So, there is interest in figuring that out. I can't believe that we would build something like this. We've gotta get out of this car-centric mindset in this community, and we've gotta start thinking differently. We gotta think bike, and we gotta think walk, and we gotta think transit, and we gotta start building more communities that way. And so, and I don't think we could go into something like this without having that. I hope that the transit plan comes back, recognizing this is an important area. I agree, I don't think we take them out of the conversation. So, we're at first reading, whether this is a no on this modification for now, or this is a defer here. I don't know where we're at here on this, but I hope transit becomes a very important part of this conversation somewhere in this, and I agree with you, you can't put it in the middle of the, it's not in the middle of the development, for sure. That's a silly place to put this, it needs to be on the outside of the development, for sure.
Would you like to hear from Mr. Gamble, who has a speaker card? I didn't say your name, but you're welcome to come up too, as an applicant.
Thank you.
Mr. Gamble is very formal, because I've requested him to fill these out, but I'm gonna give you a pass.
Well, I appreciate that, Mayor. I apologize for that. Good afternoon, I'm Alec Chambers, market leader for Highwoods. I want to thank you for your time this afternoon, tonight, and for all the meetings we've had to get here today. Joined today by my teammates at Highwoods, our partner CenterCal, and our design team. We're just here to answer questions after Greg goes through his presentation. I want to talk quickly about three things he's gonna mention, residential, traffic, and the transit. So, on the residential, as you know, we're not sneaking up on anybody with ovation. We've been, you know, on the city's radar for 15 years. All we're really trying to do here is expand the PUD to just bring it in line with the current version of Envision Franklin and the market. And part of that is that we will have, you know, you'll see an increase in residential. But it's actually less residential units than we could build today on our existing PUD plus the multifamily allowed under the RC-12 provision. So, we're actually limiting ourselves somewhat on the residential. We're having for sale and for rent, you know, we'd like to do more for sale, but really the balance makes it kind of difficult. And, by the way, this is gonna be a multi-phase project, so we're gonna be bringing on the multi, all the residential in chunks. I mean, this could be five, 10 years. So, it's much smaller chunks, it's not just throwing a bunch of residential all in one day. On traffic, as you know, Envision Franklin, multiple versions of Envision Franklin have encouraged development in this corridor because it's so close to the I-65. The city has and continues to invest a lot of dollars in infrastructure and roadways in this area, and so it makes a lot of sense. We've worked hard with city staff, a lot of time with staff, with Oriam, to just coordinate our efforts on all this, to make sure, you know, with a lot going on, they're doing some road improvements, we're doing some road improvements, y'all are doing some road improvements, just to bring it all together. We just think it's the right, it's in the right place for Envision Franklin and where the city has always expected growth. So, we feel very good about that. Transit. So, we were asking for the garage on Carruthers before transit really entered the picture because of the tightness of the site, you know, our curb cut on McEwen is so close to Carruthers, and then we have Wetland on the other side. So, we have some physical limitations of where we can put that garage. That's really how the conversation started, and we were heading towards upgrading it, hiding it, camouflaging it, and that's really what we're seeking. The transit conversation came in two different methods. First, we started, city hired Max for the Franklin Transit Authority, or Transit Division Authority. So, we were working with him on the little local shuttles, about how we could fit that in, what's, you know, where's the best place for him, for those smaller buses to pull in, get out, and that was actually on Carruthers is what, for the most part, there's also another stop in Turtle. And then Max brought in WIGO. And it so happens that the deputy director of WIGO is Debbie Frank, so if y'all might know, she's somebody I've worked with in the past on a huge project in Atlanta, where we actually built, she was with MARTA, the rail line, with MARTA at the time. We actually built a MARTA station on an elevator track next to a building. It was a lot of work, but I've known her, worked with her for many, many years. So, excited when we got the opportunity to start talking to them, but we are at the very early stage of this. We've had multiple conversations, both us, the city, and Oriam, about where's the best place, what's most efficient to combine, they call it a transfer station, so the local shuttles can connect with the motor coaches. And the motor coaches require some parking, and it, you know, it all kind of has to get linear. I say all that to say, we don't, we have no idea if the transit, the big, I mean, the Franklin Transit will work, we can find smaller spaces for that. The big WIGO loop-in, kind of park-and-ride, you know, going to Nashville or the airport, we're very, very early. And if we have a condition that says you can only put that garage there if you have transit, we're not gonna have the garage there, because we will move a lot faster than WIGO will, whether that's city funds, state funds. So, I just know, as a developer, we're gonna move faster than they can. And if we know, you know, if we can only get it, if we get that, we're just not gonna do it, because we gotta go. So, I just say that to say that if the, either the conditions in there or gets disapproved, the garage on Carruthers gets disapproved, we can't do the big transit idea. We're meeting with WIGO and city on Friday to kind of walk the site, look at something else. We're also talking to them about, up at the Marriott of the street, we own the buildings next to it, and you may or may not know, Grayline Private Company is running coaches from the Marriott to the airport, and we're gonna be providing parking for them. So, we'll be tying in on that, and ultimately, WIGO might pick that up and take over that, where that becomes kind of the transfer station. So, makes a lot of sense at ovation, we got an ovation, Oriam, but whether, I don't know how this turns out, but we're gonna be talking to them about both locations, because it's super important for all of us and all that. So, on ovation, we're very, very excited about this new version. Feel like it's the right product, at the right place, at the right time, and we look forward to our discussion tonight. With that, I'll turn it over to Greg.
Thank you, Alec. Thank you, Mayor and Alderman. I do want to point out a couple of highlights about the ovation master plan. The original PUD was 77.7 acres in size. It's here, and it did not include this area of RC-12. The Mars campus is proposed to stay RC-12 in this future proposal, but we are increasing the area of the ovation master plan to, by 27 acres. And in the RC-12 base zone district today, you're allowed to do a 12-story building. Today, 60% of the total square footage can be commercial, and 40% of the total square footage can be multifamily apartments. When this area was planned... When this area was planned in 2014, and the traffic studies were produced, they included 1.4 million square feet of office. That equates to about 813 multifamily apartment units. Multifamily is the only housing type that is permitted as by right in the RC-12 base zone district. The fact that Ovation is here is very intentional. Ovation is located here because state representatives, city leaders, planners have thoughtfully considered investment on this corridor. And in return to the investment, Ovation will be, at the end of the development, they will have paid over $35 million in roadway impact fees. By the end of the development, they will have paid $8 million in parkland dedication fees. By the end of the development, they will have over $8 million in sewer impact fees. With full buildout, Ovation will generate over $13 million a year to the city of Franklin in sales tax, hotel tax, property tax. And that's in addition to the sales tax that's paid to the state, and the $10 million per year that will go to the county through property taxes. So those significant early investments, that 15 years of planning to make Ovation happening, you're starting to see what the results could be with the approval of this master plan. Why would Highwoods abandon the by-right entitlements for 12-story buildings for 60% commercial and 40% multifamily residential? They could achieve higher intensities than they're proposing. Well, the reason is, is that they want a holistic master plan. They want a master plan where office is incorporated into the campus and integrated into the residential and commercial. It goes back to what the Envision Franklin policy says about live, work, play. They want to create that placemaking opportunity here in Franklin with Ovation. We heard you at the joint conceptual workshop, and we have provided a height map for you. This is a kind of a reference guideline, as you have conversations tonight, and as you consider Ovation over the next month or two. We've provided this height map. On the next page, we have the first floor plan. So the pink buildings are mixed use, that's the restaurants, retail, that's the 400,000 square feet of personal service, it could be day spa, it could be a restaurant. That's in that Main Street core. From Carruthers Parkway to Mars Pet Care, Ovation Parkway, that distance is the same distance from Starbucks to Landmark Bookstore in downtown Franklin. Give you a sense of scale and walkability on this plan. On the next page, then, we've provided you with the uses that are above the first floor. So this third page shows you where office is located, where multifamily is located. The yellow is the residential, the blue is the upper floors of office. On the height map, we have set controls throughout the development. RC-12 says every building can be 12 stories. Highwoods and CenterCal team said that's not the character that we're going for. We want to create windows of opportunity. If a user comes along, a national office tenant, and they want 12 stories, they want to be able to accommodate that. But the entitlements, where we've set the office at 1.225 million square feet of office, we couldn't build all 12-story office buildings. It's not intended to be able to do that. If all of these were 12 stories, we would be well beyond the entitlement that we're asking for. But they do want the opportunity for one or two to have those heights. So we have capped the corner building on Carruthers and McEwen to between four and eight stories tall. And we were told that there was some concern that the Jury Hotel, kind of up on the hill, was too tall, and be respectful of the fact that the planning commission and the Alderman don't want that here. And so we're looking at our neighbor next door, Oryum, and saying, okay, they're doing the eight-story buildings, we're going to cap ours at eight stories for this corner. So we get a consistent look from an architecture standpoint across. And then we look at the building at the corner of Ovation Parkway and Carruthers, and we've capped that building at 10 stories in height. So it would be between six and 10. And that's to reduce some of that visual height as you're driving down Carruthers Parkway. There are four buildings that have a height potential of 12 stories, and that's buildings D, F, S, and P. And on the second floor plan, you'll see that those are where we have office, on those upper floors above the mixed-use buildings. Alderman Berger, you asked me at the joint conceptual workshop, how far back is the garage that faces Carruthers Parkway? And I think I said about 35 feet, and I was wrong. I brought a section showing that detail. When we're near the hotel, it's 100 feet from Carruthers Parkway. When we are closest to the right in, right out, it is 67 feet. And if you look on the last page of the 11-by-17 documents that I've handed you, this is in response to our requested motion to the planning commission, which is this eight-and-a-half-by-11 that I handed out at the very beginning. This shows Highwood and CenterCal's commitment to design this building in a way that resonates with the architecture that is along the street. We want to have an elevated experience in Ovation. We don't want the, people who are coming to the offices, or coming to the restaurants, retails, to be distracted by a parking garage. We need to let people know where to park. But we want a building along Carruthers Parkway that is at an elevation of the rest of the buildings that are in Ovation. We are not asking for this garage to be located here specifically because of mass transit. There's an opportunity to potentially incorporate mass transit, and that'd be great. But this right in, right out on McEwen is fixed. It can't go any further west, it can't go any further east, it's in a fixed point. This right in, right out that is on Carruthers, it's in a fixed point, and cannot be moved north or south, because of sightlines and other issues. There are not very many options to create a centrally-located parking garage, where we have a Main Street, buildings on both sides, architecture on both sides, creating that activity within the Ovation master plan that the regional commerce policy calls for. So we're a little stuck on how that is actually going to work. We've been told by the fire marshal that there's some complexities about their response by parking on Carruthers Parkway if there's residential or office lining this building. So we have some concerns about how to create an appropriate pull-off for fire. If we had a bus stop along that edge, that certainly would start to solve the issues for fire, because they've got a place they can pull off to. But if we start lining that building with office, or retail, or residential, we start getting into some conflicts on how all services can be provided along that edge. I'll stop there, Mayor, and happy to answer any questions that you may have, and I hope these are helpful resources for you.
Vice Mayor, you had a question?
Yes, sir, I do. Greg, on the poster that you held up, and the last page that you have here that you showed, could you go into a little bit more depth on what Alderman Berger's question was regarding the distance from where the road is, to how close you're getting up to the building, if a bus stop was placed in there, how much might remain between the curbside and the building?
Right now, there is a, I believe it's a 16, or 12-foot, it's a 12-foot greenway trail that runs along Carruthers Parkway in that location. The greenway trail would have to move further into Ovation, and there would have to be a pull-off of a certain distance, and I don't know the distance, for buses to be able to pick up...
There's no way there's going to be a bus stop there.
Okay.
I mean, I know, but there's, I'm looking at the turn lane right there. Sorry.
That's all right, just asking the question, because that's where we got into the modification of standards for number eight. And that is the, that is the side where the bus stop would be, though, correct?
It would be.
Okay.
Our team is happy to have conversations with Wigo, Franklin Transit, love the idea of having that relationship. I don't think that we have all the answers, no.
And I'll just close with this, is as those discussions move forward, this will be the first time that we would have a transit bus dedicated location. And I think that we have to set the standard extremely high on what our Franklin expectations are, as we move this forward, whether it's with your group and other people connected here with our team.
Alderman Berger.
Thanks for pointing that out, Alex, about what you are entitled to. You're entitled to a lot more residential than you have. People think we're upping it, but actually you've reduced it, so thank you. We do need more for sale in there. But when you pointed out multifamily, I just want to be clear, because people would be listening to this, multifamily includes for lease, live-work units for lease, condos for sale, townhomes for sale. So it's not just rental, it's not just for sale, it's a mix, a multi.
That's correct.
So appreciate you pointing that out, and then pointing out the deduction in the entitlements. All right, thanks.
I failed to mention off-site road improvements. If anyone wants an overview of off-site road improvements, please ask me, I'm happy to go to that.
Are you finished, Alderman Berger? Alderman Caesar.
So Greg, I'll pose my question, then maybe we can get back to the off-site road improvements. I want to jump for just a second across to a different memory, MOS, modification of standards. And it is a modification of standards that is talking about the maximum height of a retaining wall.
Okay.
And in my former work on the Board of Zoning Appeals, we made this rule to limit the height, the maximum height of a zoning wall, to break up the visual that a 20-foot tall wall gives you. And I just want to orient, because it says it's on the Wetland Park side of building J, right? So is there a possibility for this potential retaining wall to be broken at 10 feet and 10 feet, as opposed to a 20-foot tall Green Monster?
I anticipated you asking this question. Okay, there's an eight-and-a-half-by-11 that Alex just provided, and there are two maps that are there. This color code in the bottom right corner shows yellow, orange, and red. And the yellow portions of wall are below 10 foot in height. The orange portion of wall is below, I believe it's below 15 feet in height. And that small, little red piece is where we have conveyance that's coming into the wall, and the wall just happens to be at 22 foot in that location, because we have a valley where the conveyance is coming in, the pipe.
Yeah.
The stormwater pipe's coming in, so the wall's taller in that location.
The low part in...
The low part, yeah, it's lower. And so when we're asking for an MOS for the 22-foot height, it's for that portion that's there in red and orange.
How wide is that, perhaps?
Um...
I mean, it looks tiny here, but you can make a bus look small if you zoomed out far enough.
Sure, sure, sure. I can't guess, I have 60 feet.
We got a lot.
Okay, thank you for the additional context there.
I hope that's helpful, yeah.
I might also add that, you know, the vegetation that's there today, vegetation that's there today, because we're not really trying to make the wall taller, which is, it's going deeper.
Yeah.
But the vegetation that's already there today, that we won't be removing, we'll be clearing out a little bit, but the, that's really going to block it.
It'll break up.
Even the top of the wall, you really probably won't see, but that's the bottom, I don't see any way you would actually see it.
Okay, appreciate that clarity. And then, and then getting back to the major topic of discussion here is this parking garage. I think it is critical for us to screen it, to make it look as if it's a part of the other building structures, not a vacant parking garage. I'm not so worried about headlights shining off the lake at Oryum, as I am about the optics of an empty parking garage from the roadway, as people are walking and driving up and down it. I also should hope that the creative thinking that staff demonstrated and working with you guys, and perhaps not following the best linear path, doesn't restrict our ability as a community to be intentional about transit. If this is a good option, I hope that no one carries any ill will forward from the fact that maybe we stepped out of line. I don't feel that way from either of my colleagues here, but I just wanted to go online and say, or on record, saying, I think it's excellent that our staff is creative and brings ideas like this to us. And we can always decide that that's not the best place for it in the future. And I hope that those members of those other governing organizations don't take it as us stepping over them. Perhaps just, we got creative, somebody got excited about an idea, and we presented it, maybe not in the best way this evening. So I would certainly support us continuing the discussion around transit. I'm not going to voice an opinion that this is the best place for transit or not tonight. But I would voice that my biggest concern about this parking garage is that you drive down the street and you go, there's a parking garage.
Alderman Brown.
This is probably the nicest facade I've ever seen on a parking garage proposed ever. Beautiful. I don't think I've ever seen it before, so I don't think you're going to see a parking garage from the street. I just wanted to add, this is the only place that we're going to see this nice of a parking garage facade, right? It doesn't wrap, it doesn't, there's no other place that this is, it'll just be the Carruthers.
All the parking garages in Ovation are required to use materials and kind of match the principal buildings that they're associated with. And those rules came about when, at Franklin Park, you have this concrete slab structure right on I-65. We're raising the bar.
Yeah, I have, I don't have concern if that's what you're actually going to put on that parking garage, yeah.
All right, Alderman Baggett. We need to move along by a little bit, because we've got a lot yet.
I understand, this is just the largest development, probably, in Franklin's history. But we've got, I would argue that the Third Avenue parking garage of the city and the county own is probably more ornate, and I think that's probably the more direction I was, I was looking at.
Okay.
I want this wrapped. I mean, I think this is, if this is going to be the core of our intersection, of our McEwen-Carruthers intersection, I'm going to just be clear, I'm not going to support the parking deck right there, unless it changes, and others might. I do support the fact there's 12, you've got a 12-foot bike pedestrian path here. I would like for staff to look at if we can get fire access on that path to get to, I know it's not fire's preferred method, but I do acknowledge that there are complications to this site that I think we could look closer. If we want to get creative, I'd like to get creative in that regard, and maybe have something on the outside. Instead of that deck, and I'm just telling you, I mean, you go down Third Avenue, it doesn't look like a deck, but you know it's a deck. It's going to be the same thing. It's going to look like a nice deck, but you're going to turn into one of our major corridors now, and for 200 feet, how many feet, 300 feet, you're going to see a parking deck. And you're going to know it's a parking deck, but it's going to have brick on it. And it's going to look nice, but like, I really think this is a, if we can get creative there, I think it can be good for everyone. I, I don't, I won't, I just want that to get looked at closer before the next time. Last thing, this is the, is if you look at the same picture, if you look in the far-right corner, the little blue, lighter blue, that's the 10-story office building that's kind of on the cap of it.
That's right, yes.
So I've said this, this is not new. I've said this in joint conceptual, and some others, but I just think that's too tall. I think across the street is five stories at Oryum. Is that correct?
It is.
It's five stories across the street. I know there's a range of six to 10, but you've got eight, you've got four to eight, four to six, one to three, six to 10, five across the street, two across the street, and then eight there with the hotel. I would just like to see that maybe capped at six. And we can talk about that at another time, because we have a lot to do, but I didn't want that to be a surprise if, I just can't support a 10-story building there on top of that hill, or on the way up that hill. Yes, it's building V. And I understand why you need the range to, because you don't know what tenant is going to be there, I get that. But largely, I think there's things we can work out on both of, all these issues, but that, you know, just letting everybody know.
Well, thank you for the time tonight, Mayor.
Yeah, can you just quickly tell us about the off-site improvements real fast?
Absolutely.
Because we talked about that before, but you need to roll it over.
So we talked about Oryum's commitments for the red and the dark blue. Ovation's commitment is to extend and build a new third lane, going all the way to I-65 from Carruthers Parkway. So what that means is that on McEwen, you will have a six-lane median-divided road with additional turn lanes. And then they're going to be constructing a third lane that is headed eastbound on McEwen.
Yeah, so that comes...
Increasing the traffic capacity of McEwen.
Will that go all the way down to the stoplight to turn into Mars?
It will.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Did this reduce total trips to, this was a?
Total trip.
You had to order, Alderman Baggett. I'll recognize you if you raise your hand.
Mayor Moore.
I have Alderman Berger speaking right now.
That's right. Well, I'm pretty much done. I just want to make sure it went all the way down to Mars.
Yes.
I'm good.
Do you need to make one more comment, Alderman Baggett?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
Trip count on this one?
Ovation has been used in traffic study after traffic study since 2014. Anytime a development came in, Ovation had to be used in the background of the study. So we had pretty much an obligation or requirement to stay within the 2014 traffic studies. We have increased the trips by 1,104 with this plan, with this approach. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we're going to go to items 11 through 14 that have to do with contracts with Gresham Smith, and also utility estimate spreadsheets. Any questions about those?
Mr. Mayor, one quick thing, this is on both agendas. When you get to item 14, which is Contract 2025-0268, we will want you at the 7 o'clock meeting to make a motion to, that that be, you give authority to the city administrator working with the law departments, the attorney, to execute an agreement substantially in this form. We have not gotten the final back from TDOT, or we don't expect it to be much different, but it's not exactly there. So just granting that authority helps us keep it moving and get it done. So just, that will have to have a more specific motion granting the city administrator, city attorney, the ability to finalize something substantially in the form of what's in front of you today.
Okay, good.
But this all provides for us to get reimbursed for all the costs related to relocation of water and sewer lines for the bridge.
And 15 is City Franklin Contract 2025 dash 0248 with LDA Engineering for Design Engineering Services for a water line from Mack Hatcher to Lewisburg Pike to Sullivan Farms from a mountain to exceed $290,000. 16 is Order 2025 dash 23 to amend Appendix A Comprehensive and Penalties, Chapter 25 Parks to the Franklin Municipal Code Concerning Establishing Rate Fees for Newly Established Parks or Facilities Within the Franklin Park System.
So we did present this at Budget and Finance back in June. We didn't have a quorum at that time, but we did walk through a pretty significant study that our team has done to establish rates for some facilities that have come or are coming online to be consistent with the market and appropriate. And so we're going to give you a brief version of that to walk through it and get your feedback and go from there. So I think we have Suzanne and Lisa here ready to go.
Yeah, so a brief summary, a lot of what you see here is existing fees, pavilions, tennis courts, Eastern Plank Event Facility, some new fees here. We've got the barn at Harlandstow Farm, we're a week away from opening that facility. Our grand opening's on Tuesday of next week. Those fees are listed there for you all. We feel that we've set some pretty substantial fees to make the space rentable for the community. You also see bicentennial there, new fees there. We've had that facility open for a couple of months, we've had a couple of small rentals there, and those have gone pretty well. We also have some park closure fees that are new for you all. The park at Harlandstow Farm and potentially, or in the future, we'll have Robinson Lake there, and so those fees are listed there. I'm happy to go through those line by line if we would like to do that tonight. Happy to do that. And then the other fees listed below are some staff fees and some parking fees and things like that.
Alderman Blanton.
Of course, I know we're more in the event business now, so I get this, but Suzanne, explain to me the food vendor fee at the very bottom under other fees, what is that?
We use that for our special events that the parks team host. So a family day event, when we have a food vendor out, we use that fee to.
Got it, okay. It's not where you're having to have a caterer pay this fee, okay? You see where I was going? Because everybody wants a piece of pie, and I'm just.
Yeah, it's when we have a food truck out.
Okay.
Small fee for that.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll keep rolling, thanks.
Thank you all.
City Franklin Contract 2025 dash 0178 with Jewel Brothers Farms for lease agreement for farming at Atkinson Creekside Property. Any questions?
Any questions?
So, thank you, Mayor. So the farm on both sides of the roads on Franklin Road has always been farmed by the Jewel family. It is our recommendation that we would continue that effort while we're in the works of planning and designing what we're planning on doing with the property. I think the majority of people would appreciate, let's keep it the same until we're ready to act.
Yes.
The fees, how are you doing? I mean, we're not just giving the property to be.
No, sir, there's a $500 lease. That's what they currently pay. They paid $500 on both sides of the road, and so I just said, keep those the same.
Thanks, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll go to item 18, which is Resolution 2025 dash 60 authorizing the City of Franklin to join the State of Tennessee and other local governments in amending the Tennessee State Subdivision opioid abatement agreement and approving the related settlement agreements.
There's been some additional components, settlement components added to that. This has just enabled us to join in that as that continues on.
And there may be more. I mean, every so often we'll get another vendor, so if we've gone down this path, we should just stay on this path.
Thank you, yeah.
And then item 19 is Amendment 1 to City Franklin Contract 2024 dash 0331, a professional services agreement with Windrow Phillips Group to provide lobbying and advisory services.
For several years, we've worked with another group of cities around our size, also city managers, 10 or so cities. This continues that arrangement. It bumps the price tag up just a little bit, but this is a really valuable service for us, both working on legislative issues, some regulatory issues with the state, and so we'd like to continue that, and we do benefit from the partnership with other similar cities across the state.
I would just ask that we make sure that when our lobbyist is there and there are issues that will affect our city, that the Board of Mayor and Alderman is notified of that, so we will know if we agree with their direction that they intend to take, not just through administration, but I think we need to know what issues that they're going to promote or try to not promote for us.
Yes.
So, all right, thank you.
Item 20, discussion of a proposed Harland PUD subdivision.
So we know we had these items on your voting session tonight, but we wanted to carve out at least some time in this work session to give you a chance for some discussion and fill in any blanks you may have or any other information. We did collect a series of questions or comments from you over the last several weeks. We wanted to start there and walking through some elements and then maybe address any other questions you may have that help you be prepared for later this evening and those discussions. So Paul's going to take us through the initial piece, and then we'll go where you want to go in terms of any other questions or clarifications that might be helpful to you. So Paul, take it away.
Okay, so I'm going to give kind of a summary of the history and where we're at and some of the different issues that are on the table. I actually thought Joey was getting up with me, so if I need him, I think he can jump up. The, so the, looking back at the history of this, the traffic impact study was approved in May of 2025. The intersections were analyzed by the City of Franklin Traffic Engineers, our third-party consultant, Williamson County, Williamson County's third-party traffic consultant, and prepared by a engineering forum for the developer. So in summary, five traffic engineering groups have looked at this and vetted this study. We are very much comfortable with the numbers of what is being presented. I'll go on to say that in the traffic impact study, it was initially assumed that there were 300 dwelling units, some single-family detached, some attached, 8,000-square-foot retail plaza, 9,000-square-foot fine dining, 8,000-square-foot office, small office, 800 key hotel. The applicant, through multiple discussions that happened publicly, privately, with the community, with stakeholders, voluntarily reduced their density down. They went down to 242 dwelling units versus the 350. They also reduced their retail, they reduced their office space. So for this reason, staff hasn't required an updated traffic impact study. I will tell you that there is no concerns on Hillview Lane with the traffic volumes being proposed from a staff level and what we have seen from our third-party consultant reviews. The initial assumption assumes 60% of that traffic would utilize Hillview Lane, 40% of that traffic would go down Coleman Road, again vetted by five traffic engineers, and that's ultimately what they agreed upon. The TIA, it does show some failures in existing condition today. You start adding in the background certain failures as well, but ultimately, as we looked at the phasing of infrastructure, the timing of Columbia Avenue improvements, ultimately what we're seeing is that with the background and the proposed trips that they're adding, that the level of service at these major intersections meets our standards. Again, vetted through five traffic engineers. So, timing of off-site improvements, staff did put some caps on the development initially, and remember this traffic impact study being done back in May of 2025, and these conditions of approval were put on by staff prior to a lot of these discussions going public and a lot of feedback from the various different stakeholders out there. I'm going to go over Condition 30, which is what staff put on it. Now, before I go over this, I want you to understand that the applicant is proposing to modify Condition 30 to make it more stringent on the developer. So we are in support of about 99% of what they're proposing to do. But essentially, what they're proposing to do is bring the infrastructure, or do almost all that infrastructure before development. I'm not going to speak to it, I'd rather them speak to their own proposed modification to Condition 30. But essentially, the off-site improvements have to be designed with the first site plan. Initially, the development was envisioned of coming off of Hillview Lane. So staff initially said that the Columbia Avenue improvement shall be done during that first phase of development, which would then service to Hillview Lane, and we then capped them at 50 units. That was done for a few reasons, fire being one of them, street standards being one of them, having redundant access. We wanted to have a dual access point, one down to Coleman Road and Hillview Lane, and so they were capped there until they did all the other off-site improvements. So at the time, we were in agreement with that. Again, the applicant is proposing more stringent conditions, and if you would allow, I'll allow them to explain those and the proposed modifications and phasing that they're doing, and we are in full agreement with it. I'd say again, 99% outside of the gating. There are some contingencies here and there that need to be discussed. Talking a little bit about the timing of the Columbia Avenue improvements, we're currently in the right-of-way stage. We anticipate starting construction in 2028, and that project would ultimately be complete 2031. I would love to do it faster, and we're continuing to push it as hard as we can. If you look at the traffic impact analysis for their Phase 2, it was, 2032 was the horizon year looked at, so it lined up very well with when we anticipate those improvements being done. So Mack Hatcher Southeast project timing, that was also brought up in numerous questions. As you know, it's in TDOT's tenure plan. Current estimated construction year is 2032, so that project, if it can remain on schedule, will not be complete until 2034. We've told you numerous, numerous times, and we've been directed numerous, numerous times, to do everything in our power to accelerate it, and we're continuing to try to accelerate it. We're supposed to have a meeting with them in August to try to figure out how we can better position that should funding become available. One of the bigger issues that has come up is the insulation of the gate, or the more controversial issue is the insulation of the gate on Hillview Lane. And so I'm no zoning expert, but in talking with our planning department and other staff members on the DRT, the City of Franklin Zoning Ordinance Section 9.2.2 requires all new streets serving residential lots to be public streets. For private streets to be gated, to be installed, the applicant would be required to take a step back, go to the Franklin Municipal Planning Commission, get a recommendation on a modification of standard, and then come back ultimately for the board to vote on. That is my understanding of how that process would work. The insulation of a gate on Hillsborough Road would also have a pretty big impact on the traffic impact analysis.
He said Hillsborough Road.
Sorry, Hillview Lane. Hillview Lane, thank you. The insulation of a gate on Hillview Lane would also impact the traffic impact analysis versus 60% going north, 40% going south, 100% of that traffic would go south. I have no idea what the impacts are going to be. So that would all need to be reanalyzed if a gate is put there for emergency purposes only. The question has become up, and we've been trying to think outside the box, so as the applicant in trying to address the issues that are out there, is what if we put in a gate that was only accessible on public road to Hillview residents, Harland residents, guests of the hotel at Harland, and essential public utility services? Again, our concern with that is we don't feel that it's appropriate or allowed to gate a public roadway that public funds are being spent on and limit it to a certain population. And so we don't feel that's allowed or appropriate as well. So those are some of the different issues we're having with the gate insulation, and would love to see more discussion and feedback, especially for the applicant's sake, so that we can try to get this resolved and move this development forward. There's been lots of questions about the impacts to Hillview Lane. The roadway varies in width from 19 feet to 26 feet. Just my personal opinion, I thought the proposed typical section with the sidewalk that was initially proposed was the best long-term solution for it. But again, through extensive public engagement and trying to appease the residents on Hillview Lane, and the various stakeholders are out there, what the applicant is proposing now is what I would call a minimum build solution, which is essentially a 26-foot-wide road, a four-foot shoulder, two 10-foot lanes, and a two-foot shoulder. It will impact some trees, it's going to have impacts on those 19-foot sections. We don't generally get into those details. It would require a full survey, a full design, and I know some of the residents are concerned about it and want that information. We just generally don't do that at this phase. I do want to say that the applicant and staff has heard you guys loud and clear to try to limit the impact and disruption to that corridor. The tree tunnel, as they're proposing to save it now, does comply with Connect Franklin long-term. When Mack Hatcher comes through, the long-term plan has always been to turn that tree tunnel into a multipurpose trail, and so they're complying with the long-term vision of Connect Franklin. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. I think if you would like to hear more about the revised Condition 30, I would prefer to defer to the applicant on that and the actual phasing that they're proposing. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions for Paul? If not, I'd like to ask the applicant, I do have one citizen that wants to speak to it, and then I have the applicant that would want to speak. So Janet Curtis wanted to make a two-minute comment on it.
Yes, sir, I do have a question.
Do you want to ask Paul a question? Go ahead.
Paul, would you expand just a little bit? When you mentioned a long-term solution, the initial recommendation to include a sidewalk was a long-term solution. Can you give us a little bit more of maybe a life cycle of what that long-term solution, the way we would require it versus the minimum build solution, which I think you're referring to the paving place, what that life cycle looks like when we're looking at maintenance, we're looking at how many years will it last, et cetera, between the two?
I mean, what the applicant is proposing is a lot less long-term maintenance because we won't have a sidewalk or a drainage system that we need to worry about, that would cost more. But generally speaking, what we see is that when these developments happen, sometimes we leave out sidewalk that we know is going to be needed long-term, and we go down the road of least resistance, and what we're proposing is a four-foot sidewalk for these residents to walk on long-term. And if history tells me anything, we'll be back out in places like Fieldstone Farms, and we'll be building sidewalk for these HOAs and subdivisions. But with that said, you know, if this is what those residents want and they don't want a sidewalk, I can understand that, and we'll defer to their judgment right now. But, you know, a four-foot paved shoulder is not going to be ideal to walk on long-term as the city continues to develop.
And what about the life cycle, if you will, of a pave-in place versus that long-term solution as far as if you're just paving in place on top of it, the breakdown of that material at the edges or in the middle if it's not constructed correctly?
Yeah, we will, I have full confidence that they'll build it correctly and we'll inspect it correctly, but there will be a shoulder, it does have base stone that gets extended, it will break down on the edges a little bit more over time, but it's nothing we can't handle from a simple milling and paving. So as long as we get the subgrade right, I don't have any concerns with the paving-place solution, which they will.
Okay.
Hopefully that answered your question.
Yes, it did, thank you.
Is it okay with the board? Go ahead with the public comments. Ms. Curtis, please come up. Two minutes, please, and then we'll follow with Mr. Campbell.
Good evening, Alderman. I'm a resident of Mace Creek Basin. My name is Janet Curtis. I live on North Chapel Road in Franklin. And we fought against Poplar Farms when we were hearing all about the same things you're hearing tonight as far as development goes and all the things that the developers say. But going back to a meeting on November 23rd of 19, 2021, in a four-to-four tie, the mayor broke that tie by voting in favor of Poplar Farms. Well, I don't know how many of you have taken a ride down there lately, but Alderman Barnhill noted the, the road must be completed before any houses can be sold, calling it a $12 to $14 million development requirement. That turned out to be false. Development timeline shows first houses won't be built till 2026, giving the city five years to address infrastructure concerns. That turned out to be false. Houses have been popping up like flowers in the springtime. They have been built since 2024, 2025, well before the five-year timeline. Houses have been sold and people have moved in. Market Street is not even complete. So, the, what is the answer? And how can we believe what developers and builders all say when you make your decisions, when obvious inconsistencies happen to a plan like this? So, I just ask you to consider very carefully everything that you vote on. Thank you.
Thank you. See, Mr. Valash and Mr. Campbell both are coming.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Board of Alderman. Nice to see you again this evening. Obviously, we've been in front of you all for quite some, many times and have been working on this process hand-in-hand with staff, with utility districts, neighbors, interested parties, the Heritage Foundation, other boards within our community for, for two years now. And I, I think a couple of things I want to stress as Greg prepares some boards and handouts is reminding folks that we are local, and because of that, we are very cautious about balancing the community needs and demands with available infrastructure and community wishes. Last night, my wife and I went out to walk our dog, and as a reminder of how close my family lives to this property, we were evidently in the radius of the drop-offs that went on mailboxes in the south part of Franklin. So, we got one of these nice flyers on our own mailbox at home, and I got online last night and I looked at the comments, and I was shocked about the amount of hatred and misinformation that was going on, on the change.org platform and on the, the social media circles. And it reminded me of why my family and I have chosen to make our homes here and raise a family here over the last 20 years, and some of the hatred, misinformation that we have seen through this topic really surprises me and is not the Franklin that we've chosen to live in, invest in, do business in, and reminds me of some of the previous elections that we've had recently, or, or, you know, public permit votes and things of that nature that have been, become very, very divisive. And so, as we hear concerns about a Hillview Lane or about traffic infrastructure, we stand here tonight making sure that you all know that we want to help try to solve those problems and try to do it in a collaborative way with you all, with staff, completely agree with the recommendations from staff. And so, some of the recommendations that, that Greg's going to speak to with regard to a modification specifically of Number 30, which was the off-site improvements that are in front of you all, you know, the, the lady that just spoke with regard to infrastructure being first and a cautionary tale about some things that are happening on the east side of town. We are also worried about that same condition. So, what you are getting ready to hear tonight is Boyle, as a long-term partner in the City of Franklin for the last 25 years, we are asking to change the modifications, or, I'm sorry, the conditions of approval to say, do not issue a building permit to us before the off-sites are built. This is not a condition where we're estimating a five-year build-out and we hope things go along. We are asking for these changes to be made so that we can place the infrastructure first before we add additional impacts. With regard to Hillview Lane, I want to make it very clear. Boyle has not entered into this process requesting or wanting or suggesting that we want a gate on Hillview Lane for some reason. The south end of the development is open and will be open to the public ideally if, if the plans go forward as, as proposed. We want to create an, a inclusive environment in this community that matches up with envisioned Franklin and the plans for Village Green and, and some of the, the plans that this board has worked so hard on. The feedback that we got from the community in suggesting some gates on Hillview Lane is to help as a traffic calming device on Hillview and to lessen the, the impact there. It has not been for some exclusivity or, or some special need within our development. And in working through some comments with staff, we fully understand the concerns with permanent gates and private maintenance and public maintenance and the exclusivity that that could cause. And so, what we are suggesting in this modification is a temporary gate that is in place while the rest of the infrastructure takes place and builds out, so that we don't want, if we have promised to start the project from the south, we need a way to control the construction traffic. It's fine that we say we're going to come from the south, but without having some of those measures in place in a temporary condition, other than having a police officer or guard there to direct traffic, that is what we're suggesting in that case, that would be a temporary condition and allow you all to help place the timeline for what that, what that is. Because we too agree that the, the city's goals of interconnectivity and walkability are paramount. So, I'm sorry for the little bit of a rambling preamble, but want to introduce Greg a little bit more so he can talk through the, the proposed steps. Not that Greg needs an introduction, since you guys have wished happy birthday and everything.
Thank you, Mayor and Alderman. Over the past, very recent, three or four years, the city and the county have been very intentional about having conversations with each other about long-range planning. One of the most refreshing parts about being a planner in Franklin is that this is a planning city, probably the most professional and well-thought-out planned city in the state of Tennessee. I got to be honest. We do a lot of work throughout the state of Tennessee, and your staff, your planning team, they're excellent, and they do a great job. And the reason they do a great job is because they're seeking public input. They're seeking the public's vision. They're seeking neighborhood meetings. We have long conversations that last a year. We just went through a year-long process in Williamson County talking about our urban growth boundary. You may remember talking specifically about this area between Carter's Creek Pike and Hillview Lane. It was determined that a portion where South Hall is now needed to be removed from the urban growth boundary, but this Harlan property specifically needed to stay in the urban growth boundary. The county has been making decisions regarding zoning and long-range planning, saying, we want to intentionally push growth intensity into the urban growth boundaries, so much so that they rezoned properties not in the urban growth boundary to one house for every five acres. They still had 600 home permits last year. They still had 600 home permits last year. Growth is happening around us. Thompson Station's sewer treatment is about to come online in November. They have a million, 1.5 million gallons per day of treatment. They have over 2,000 homes approved just south of 840 that are going to use Columbia Pike. They're coming north. There are things outside of Franklin's control that are causing additional roadway impacts. You have a developer who's proposing 249 homes that's going to solve a traffic problem on Columbia, Henpeck, and Coleman Road that's on your CIP, that's on the county CIP, and has been on the CIP for over 20 years. It's a failing intersection now. It's going to continue to fail. What Boyle is proposing at that intersection is to bring that intersection, those two intersections, to a level of service A and B. They have $4 million in off-site roadway impact fees. They're spending upwards of 16 million. This is a developer who understands what it means to develop locally. Boyle has put together an alternative Condition 30, and I provided you this eight-and-a-half-by-11 flip. If you'll, if you'll find this in front of you and just kind of flip along with me here. Number one, Harlan's entrance at Coleman Road will be constructed and accepted before the first building permit is issued. That is the right-turn lanes, left-turn lanes on Coleman Road, and the entrance of Fairway all the way to the southern property line of the Harlan Pud, to the full length. The proposed improvements to the Coleman Road and Henpeck Lane intersection at Coleman Pike, Columbia Pike will be installed and functional before the first few neighborhood building permits. So, before the first neighborhood building permits, this Henpeck and Coleman Road intersection would be 100% complete and accepted. Mack Hatcher Parkway west of Columbia Avenue, that's the extended part, that's the part that runs by Target. So, those two lanes shall be constructed prior to opening of any new traffic from Harlan to Hillview Lane and will accommodate pedestrian connections to Winstead Hill Park and Parkway Commons. Right now, it's very difficult for pedestrians to cross that intersection, so I want to make sure that that's safe for pedestrians if we're introducing this new bikeway. You can turn on page two, and those are the improvements that we've been showing you where the tree tunnel of Hillview Lane then becomes a pedestrian path and becomes a part of that pedestrian network. The next page relates to bullet point number four. This is the perspective rendering of the 26-foot wide section. There, there is a 19-foot wide section of Hillview Lane, that's the tree tunnel. Once you're past the tree tunnel, it's 26-foot wide to the end of the road. Hillview Lane improvements will include a four-foot on-street bike path, two 10-foot travel lanes and two-foot shoulder, and applicable guard rails where safety considerations need to be included, and that's shown on this graphic here. This is what we're doing. Access to Hillview Lane shall be limited to Phase 1 of the development until such time as Columbia Avenue is constructed and it's completed from Downs Boulevard to Mack Hatcher Parkway. A third point of connection is made to Harlan Pud or as determined by the city engineer for the City of Franklin. Construction access shall be from Coleman Road only, with the exception of improvements to Hillview Lane. So, Phase 1 is articulated on the very first sheet here. It's the area that's shown in green. That's Phase 1. That's the only area that would have access to Hillview Lane until such time as Columbia is constructed in its entirety from Downs Boulevard. It's 105 homes total. Prior to the completion of the improvements of Mack Hatcher Parkway west of Columbia Avenue, so prior to the completion of Mack Hatcher going west, from private functional gates will be installed for access for Hillview residents, future Harlan residents, guests of the hotel at Harlan, and essential public service, services and utility services. The proposed gates will be temporarily conditioned until such time as Mack Hatcher Southeast is widened or completed by TDOT from Columbia Avenue to Royal Oaks Boulevard or as otherwise determined by the board and Mayor and Alderman. At that time, those gates would be removed. They would be temporary until Mack Hatcher is completed. Adam and I are happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Alderman Berger, go ahead.
Is the "N" included in Phase 1?
No, the "N" is in Phase 2.
Okay. And then I have concerns with what you will do with Coleman Road at Columbia and Henpeck at Columbia, and I don't think you know what you're going to do with that yet because you're still studying it, you're still talking to TDOT, you're still looking at other options. So, my, you know, that's my big concern there because I agree. I mean, this is going to fail. We have a problem there now. It's going to fail with or without the development for Boyle. And we do expect you to fix that and to improve that greatly, but I'm concerned how that's going to be improved.
Yes, ma'am. So, to clarify, I think if I may, Alderman Berger, if, in the, the handout that we had that started off with the color-coded map, the second page shows what is currently proposed as the as the Henpeck Coleman Road Columbia Avenue intersection. There were three different intersection improvements studied. If you need our copy, we're happy to pass it along.
Don't worry about it.
There were three different copies studied as part of the TIA and the, and the various improvements. One of those was what was in the City of Franklin's major thoroughfare plan, or Connect Franklin, I believe it's called, and it was a single intersection with a, call it a four-way stop. The county's proposal that has been on their books has been this dual traffic light. And then we also asked our traffic engineer to study a roundabout that, I'll say, in my unprofessional opinion, looked like a peanut and was more of a stretched-out roundabout compared to a traditional circle. The, and, and our professional is here tonight, if she wants to speak to her or you have more questions, but the single stoplight intersection still had failures existing after the improvements on some of the legs at PM peak hour. The roundabout, the southbound and the PM had a failing condition, and that was not looked at with various signals or triggers and things of that nature. So, and, and that's, that's, that's noted and understood. The only improvements that were modeled that currently meet the City of Franklin engineering standards of having no failing conditions during peak hour are what is in front of you tonight with this. If we work through alternatives with, with engineering, we are completely open to looking at roundabouts or other alternatives, realizing that those permits eventually have to go through TDOT to be approved. They would initially be approved with the city. We've told the county at their highway commission when we met with them that they would also have purview over the, over the plans, but then ultimately, after that's reviewed at the city and county level, it would go to TDOT for, for final approval. We are happy to make the improvements in whatever fashion this board sees fit, and we're committed to doing that first. And I think that's the main point of this modified Number 30 is that, and you'll see for those that have this sheet, existing 24 Unsignal F, every condition, with wait times of over a minute. In 2032, as our traffic study builds out without any new traffic from Harlan, assuming Harlan does not get developed, those wait times become five and six minutes with backups of over a half mile. And that is without any new development from this plan that's in front of you tonight. In 2032, with that same background traffic plus the Harlins, based on the improvements that we're making, they go to As and Bs with delays measured in the seconds, not minutes. And so, it's, it's, and, and hopefully that's digestible on that table for everybody.
And I'd say one more, that, so we have that background traffic coming up from the south that we can't control, but my thing is trying to make sure that we have as little gridlock as possible in moving. So, when Columbia Avenue is finished, Mack Hatcher gets finished, if we can move traffic on Columbia Avenue, that's going to be key. And with the roundabout, and, and you go to Europe and you have roundabout, roundabout, roundabout within two to three blocks, you have three and four of them. But the problem there was it was failing at 5:00 or rush hour, but that's where I was talking to you about the metered roundabouts.
Yes, ma'am.
The lights are there. They stay green all the time, and the traffic piles up, they're all signaled, they go on red, everybody goes with green. That changes, the thing goes again, and it mitigates that traffic at those peak hours. And that's what I'm looking for, the best way to move traffic on Columbia Avenue, because we have to deal with stuff we have no control over that's coming into our city from the south.
We have not only asked our current traffic engineer, her firms' analysis of that, but have also reached out to some firms in Indiana that have experience with this and, and Carmel, and, and talked to some engineers there to understand what that could look like. So, we are happy to engage in those conversations moving forward.
Yeah, that's important to me. Thank you.
Alderman Baggett, you're representing this.
Thank you. I appreciate it. When was the last, the last development down in this corridor, and staff might have to help me out, we've never approved anything down there, but the last development was it it Shadow, was Shadow Green?
Probably.
That is the high-density kind of six houses per acre down there. That was the last one in that corridor, right? About like 140 units or something, high-density development?
Within the city of Franklin.
Within the city. So, and there's good people that live down there, in fact. A few of them, and, you know, all of them, they're in my ward. But I think this is, you said something that 2,000 homes have been approving Thompson Station south of 840.
That does include the June Lake area there that's actually Spring Hill, but it's still right there on the, on the edge.
So over the last probably six years, Franklin's approved nothing down there except for Shadow Green, and yet we still have these, we've got failing intersections everywhere down there. And the one that y'all are proposing to fix, I'm glad that now the county has a pathway to fix it, if this happens or if it doesn't happen. I mean, now we know it can go from an F to an A or a B regardless of what happens here. So I hope that happens for all of us down there. I just think that's really important to note, is that the experience that people are having on Highway 31, Columbia Avenue, Mack Hatcher is, has not been because of the decisions of this board on those roads. It's not been the narrative of some, but 2,000 units that have been approved, not yet built, plus all the ones that have been built south of town, they're coming this way. And I see this as we can either, and we put up $50 million for Mack Hatcher Parkway southeast. We've put up, we've done everything we can do, save paying for it all ourselves at the taxpayer's expense, double taxing, because you're already paying state taxes for these rents, to approve this. But anyway, a couple of questions on the plan. This has changed. It's no longer a manned gate, it's a temporary gate. I think the last public meeting, and I'm asking this for the residents, because I think at that public meeting you brought up the public, the gate.
Correct.
And so there's some of them that are still here. I'm curious.
Yes, sir, you're correct. And so I mentioned at that meeting that we were still working through with staff to understand the legalities of gating on roadways in the city of Franklin. What we had learned after that meeting and talking with staff from planning and engineering in detail, and I believe Paul referenced some of the zoning ordinance criteria earlier, is that for a permanent gate to be in place, it requires modifications of standards and some various things that the Planning Commission and this board would need to voice or decide on. I don't think it's appropriate as an applicant to suggest something that is against the current design criteria. So what we were looking for in hearing concerns from the neighbors was how do we lessen traffic and lessen that impact? We think that that's important to do during the construction time period so that that traffic doesn't intersperse on those roadways. But I think more so importantly is to make sure that that's, the opening of these roads is tied to the opening of the totality of the roadways in this region. And so that's why we've mentioned in this revision to make it a temporary condition, is to tie in when the roads are ready.
Understand.
And so that is a, I appreciate you pointing that out because that is different than what we said the other day after learning that today, without you all making a modification at both Planning Commission and BOMA, we would not have the ability to propose that as an applicant.
And I want two things, they're technical. One, this is, we've kind of gone backwards. I don't know if the staff is pulling this, the sled, or if the applicant's pulling the sled, but we've gone backwards from the original vision of the gated situation, which was that, I think one of the, at least my vision was, I don't want any traffic that is full, wide-open up and down Hillview Lane. That was the initial comments I made, and since then we've had, I've had a lot of good conversations with residents and have other thoughts, but is that a staff-motivated? Help me understand how this is, how this has come about. Is there, are you telling the applicant that they cannot have a manned gate there because of our ordinances? And what ordinances would those be?
Well, it's the idea that a public street needs to be open to the entire public.
That is the idea, but where does it say we can't do it in our ordinances?
Well, it's the concept of public use and private use. And if it's a publicly funded street, the public needs to be able to use...
But the developer's funding the street.
This is a public road, not a private road. And private, public roads are accessible to the public, the community.
Just to clarify, from a maintenance standpoint, we're not funding maintenance in that kind of, we are funding initial construction.
It's open to the public from Coleman Road.
That's a public road as well.
Right, and there's no gate?
Yeah. I'm not sure what the question is.
The question is, how do we get from something that was proposed that I didn't hear this the last time, where that gated access, so how do we do...
We did say that last time.
How do we do emergency, then we do emergency access gates?
We do that typically, not on a public road, it's usually through a private connection. Yeah, that's typically how that happens.
So, well, then that's all I need to know, because there's zero chance I'm voting for this if this is wide open. And I think that was where we were, I mean, for now, no, I'm, I do not want the Hillview Lane wide open. And I thought that was where we were getting to, I thought that was the dialogue that the staff was going to, and, you know, I mean, I think this is one of the best plans we've had come before us. I'm talking about permanently, like keeping cars off of Hillview Lane wide open. So I thought that's just where we were going, and then I feel like we've kind of backtracked on a few things.
I can't speak to the conversation before, I was not there, but, so if you want to gate, what we're saying is that we need to do an MOS through that. Anytime we have a private roadway, we do that through MOSs. Oh, I'm so sorry. MOSs, that's the avenue to take. You should give the applicant that guidance that you want this to stop now, have an MOS added to the plan, take it back to Planning Commission, get their recommendation, and then move forward back to this board with that MOS. That's how we've done it in the past, whether it's fully private, whether it's emergency gate. We almost always get an emergency gate on private roads for the safety aspect, for fire and life safety, but that's how we've done it many times in the past. So if that's your guidance, I think that's what we need to hear today.
So, yeah, we're not going to tell you to shut off a public road. We're not going to do that. But the option you may have would be to abandon a portion of the public road and make it private.
Put the gate on the Harland lot, put, in the Harland land, put the gate in the Harland land. But by putting up a gate, it restricts public access to and from Harland. So that's where we're getting it to, it's not public anymore.
So I hear you, that, I appreciate the context, but that's very different than this is a public road, we have public access. Like that is a path forward that I think that I appreciate hearing. Going back to Planning Commission, do they have the ultimate authority on if that MOS is approved or not?
No, it's like any other MOS, but you do need their recommendation. It's not something that they've considered yet.
So other MOSs that we've done in the same fashion, we would approve it at BOMA, and then it would go back to them for approval. It's really, it was really...
For concurrence.
Yeah, concurrence.
Look to Shawna on that.
It's about 50/50. Sometimes if it's a big enough modification of standard, you'll refer it back to Planning Commission, because staff might have to reevaluate it, engineering might have to reevaluate it, and then bring it back. If it's a small MOS, that's not really very substantial, it just goes back for a concurrence. But if it's big enough, the staff needs to give you some recommendations. We would refer it back.
And I would argue this is a big change, only because our traffic study doesn't acknowledge that. So your traffic patterns are going to be moved around, maybe that'll change the off-site improvements that you need, but because it hasn't been considered in the traffic study today, that likely would need to happen when you go back.
It fundamentally changes your traffic pattern, so you need a different or updated traffic study as well.
Either, either...
You've got to understand the ramifications of the change.
So either if it is this partial manned gate or emergency access only gate, where it is a permanent emergency access only, if that was something that others desired, then either of those options, private gate with Harland resident or access and Hill, you know, or the emergency, either of those would have to go back through Planning Commission for MOS.
Yes, a permanent gate that not everyone can go through would need an MOS.
And the better practice too would also be to include a traffic study with it, so you actually understand the ramifications of that change, because it's going to push traffic to the south through these other intersection improvements. So you just need to understand the full impact of a change of that nature.
Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Barnhill. I don't think I had anybody else that... Go ahead, Alderman Barnhill, then I got Alderman Berger. I didn't realize you wanted to speak.
Yeah, I'm a little bit surprised that we're discussing the traffic issues and what we've got, because we've been discussing now for the last several years, 60,000 people coming into Franklin to work, and they're not all living here, that's for sure, so you've got to expect that traffic to be coming from somewhere. And again, we haven't built anything except Shadow Green in that direction on Columbia Avenue in several years now. I guess Sullivan Farms or some of those would be the last ones. So it shouldn't be, it shouldn't really be a surprise. Now, if we're looking at a gated community or a gate, and I'm surprised, I'm wondering what is the term for Mack Hatcher to be complete? I hear that term being thrown out. Mack Hatcher, to me, to be complete circles the city. That's complete. It's not the improvements that the state has just allocated some funding for to go from TSC across to Bushmore Road. That's not completing Mack Hatcher. That may be completing the part that the state thinks that they should be completing, but it's not, that's not completing. We've got, somewhere along the way, there's plans that say we complete Mack Hatcher, and that's circling the city. So I think that when we use that term, that's the term we should be considering, in my opinion, for what it needs to be done. I think, I think that the south, let's see, would be southwest leg of Mack Hatcher, and I've said this, I'll say it again, that's the most important part of Mack Hatcher. It's not necessarily widening a portion that we already have, but I see traffic backed up, and it doesn't matter what time of the day it is, it's no specific particular pattern as to why it backs up and how it backs up, but Columbia Avenue will be backed up past the old BGA campus at times, and it's not a 9:30 rush hour traffic or a 12-hour, 4:00 PM get-off-and-work traffic. It does not happen at a specific time. And I, I still wonder, if you're looking at, if we're discussing a permanent gate or a temporary gate, should you not, if you wanted to do the temporary gate, can you not do it on your property? I mean, I'm not, yeah, go ahead. Well, Adam?
So I think we agree, and I forget now if it was Eric or Amy or who said that, the gate that we would be suggesting would be done, the Number 30 revisions that are in front of you all suggest a gate. It does not specify the location. The gate we would propose would be on our property, within the confines of the boundary of the current Harland Farms, 311 acres, and we are proposing that as a temporary condition to be identified by this board. We were suggesting in this condition it be opened up upon the completion of the southeast leg of Mack Hatcher from Columbia Avenue to Royal Oaks was our suggestion. Our understanding and talking to engineering, and Shawna or Eric may need to clarify this, is that this board does have the authority to approve a temporary gate, even if it is on a public roadway, because it is a temporary condition versus a permanent condition that would then require the MOSs and the various additional steps that were described a minute ago. So hopefully that answers your question, Mr. Barnhill.
Clears it up a little. Dennis Alderman Barnhill. Alderman Brown.
Actually, that was what I was going to ask, that's what I had understood, that it was a temporary condition that eventually would open up. What I didn't know was whether or not it's still required going back through the process to still get that temporary condition installed, so, no.
No, if it's temporary, we can identify the parameters of when it would be open and it would become a public road, so.
I've got Alderman plant, then I'll get Alderman Berger.
Well, and it's hard to remember because we've approved so many projects. I know there have been some where we have installed emergency gates because we're abutting county roads, we're city and county meeting.
Connections, yeah.
There's also been places where we have done emergency gates. I can think of the apartment complex on Del Rio where we did an emergency gate, and that's city and city. So we have done this before. I know it's really apples and oranges, but it's interesting how the rules, it's like hard to put your finger on what's, you know, appropriate at the time, but there have been instances within the city where we have two public streets that intersect that we slammed a gate right down in the middle of, without going back to Planning Commission, without it went. I mean, I'd have to go back and look, I wouldn't argue, I wouldn't bet you. But I'm just saying...
We have done it a lot through...
There have been instances where we have done exactly what has been a potential proposal here tonight. So Jordan Road is another. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, because that killed my high school skip school lane, yeah, for sure.
So last comment, and then we're going to finish up the work session.
If we did a temporary gate for those purposes, is there anything that says that we could not then make a decision at later date, years to come, if that gate needs to be taken down or made permanent?
That would need an MOS then. The idea that BOMA decides when the gate comes down needs to be an MOS. If it's just an emergency gate put in place for safety reasons while they're building out construction and these lanes and things like that, that can be done through a site plan process. But if you want a decision on when the gate is removed, that is an MOS.
And what if we don't know if this board and the people want that gate removed eventually? Or if they do want it removed?
Again, we need that direction for the traffic impact study, because if we're not going, we're going to put the gate in, and it's not going to be open, we really need to know what those impacts are at those intersections to be able to have appropriate...
Yeah, because if you put a temporary gate in, and then four, five years down the road, you go, hey, we want that permanent or we want it totally taken away.
You know, I would say that it's easier to, it's easier to vote that it's going to be permanent and then have a decision that you want it open, and then it can be a public road, than to have this question mark of when is it going to open, when is that public process available for everyone to understand? So I would suggest if you want the decision at BOMA of when the gate is removed, do an MOS.
Okay.
All right, we're going to shut this work session down, and we'll try to resume here in about 10...